What time is the price to pop on? This is really business, the first one that's.
Yeah.
Would it be hard to get the N RAC minutes on the website? Would that be tough for somebody to do?
Would you, oh, just like on our town file?
Well, yeah, under the Natural Resource Advisory Council page on our webpage.
Oh, the web.
Those minutes on there.
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem. Do you have Cindy?
I'll try to look at.
Design journeys.
Oh, make a little. She's probably good at getting done. In the day.
Yeah, it's not urgent, you just might as well have them. Pretty good.
Morning, everyone. It's nine thirty, October fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Welcome to County Court. If you would please stand and join with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. People signed on online here. So again, welcome this morning. We, our conversations have been pretty good in conversations in the past, past court sessions. So we decided to move the start time up a half an hour and maybe allow us to either finish by noon or, or if it's really gonna run on, we'll break for lunch and start coming back after lunch. But our conversations have been running well into the noon hour. So we'll see what this, see what this does. First topic on the agenda voucher approval, we've already taken care of late items, any late items? For the agenda?
No, sir. I moved to move to approve the agenda as presented.
But I'm gonna make one correction, though, on the agency update. Instead of O Y A, it should be O Y C C.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Under agency updates. So with that correction.
Moved to approve the agenda as amended.
I second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda for today's regular county court session. And use any further conversation? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And approved and opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next topic is, we have several different minutes to get through here. Minutes approval for the September nineteenth. Regular court session.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve September nineteenth County Court Regular Session Minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, October first, regular session.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made second to approve October first, regular county court session minutes. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And lastly, the minutes from the work session with O Web this past Monday on October thirteenth.
I move to approve the October thirteenth work session minutes as presented.
Um, you weren't.
I was gonna abstain, I wasn't.
Okay, I'll second. And then any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. With one abstention. Uh, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next topic is recognition of service. Uh, we have three service recognition awards today. Uh, first one being Hannah Frank from the Borough Health Clinic. Five years of service with the county. Susan Hodak in the Assessor's Office, five years of service with the county. And Melinda Todd, five years of service with the county.
It only feels like twenty, right?
The last year of the year.
Last couple, we need a couple of years.
He's five years in our history.
Now, we wanna express gratitude for everybody in the county and especially those that are, that are hitting these milestones at five, ten, fifteen, twenty, whatever that might be. So we thank everybody for their commitment to Harney County, the people of Harney County. Do you have one here, Melinda? For you to, small memento in token.
Again, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much, Melinda.
And I will get the other one delivered to Hannah. Uh, next topic is opportunity for public comment. Anyone in room that wishes to address the court?
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but who maintains the nature trail?
Uh, the county does.
Okay, are you guys going to trim that back? It's, it's pretty overgrown. And there's just been some suspicious activities going on on the nature trail. And there's signs up that there was a cougar sighting down there. So I was just wondering if it could be trimmed back so that it's like a narrow little trail in some parts.
Yeah, I actually, it was on my list to get in touch with Eric to see, do you have a mower or anything?
I don't, but I can usually borrow the states.
Okay.
Um, and I will work on trying to get that accomplished.
Sorry, I just walked out with my dogs and I just know that there's been.
Yeah, I got a call, I got a call from somebody, I think it was on Monday. Uh, with the same concerns and it just has spaced it and I haven't had a chance to get in touch with you. Yeah, but thank you for bringing it up. So it reminded me.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, whatever we can, whatever we can do there, they have.
If they've stuck on it here, usually they share their mower with Grant County and whatever, but I'll get ahold of Joe and see if I can't farm that through a day.
If, if not, I guess next option, whatever, if A C W has one for it. All right. Thank you for reminding me of that. Uh, any other public comment? All right, so we shall move on. Next topic is agency update and we have Eric Duchelof, Roadmaster Machine Moves.
Yeah, um, a few weeks back, I had a conversation with Bill. We have four graders that we typically put on about a thousand hours a year. Um, the one at the Outreach Maintenance Station, um, and the one here in town. And a few years back, we decided to, or I decided to try to lease program versus purchasing cost per hour and how those would work out. And the two that we have leased right now, one's coming up um, here in the near future and the numbers work with doing a lease. Um, the cost per hour versus the cost of purchasing that same piece of equipment. It, it just, number one, you can schedule out and budget better with your budget, especially with right now with no rural school money. And so you just, you know, you just basically roll the lease over and start up another lease. And I've got that coming up. Um, my recommendation to Bill, um, looking at the numbers, um, was to, you know, ante up and do it again for another five years. And so that's just presenting that to the, the county court and to let you know, um, kind of what I'm.
What's the cost of that lease?
Um, the cost of the lease is fifty seven thousand per, per annual payment.
Okay.
Um, which equals out with a thousand hours, you're gonna be about fifty seven bucks an hour. This last time around, um, it was just right around forty bucks an hour. So, I mean, yeah, they, they, over the years, the cost of equipment, you know, of course, they, they, they increase some and this one will increase, but it's still within that threshold of working. You know, you're under a, the warranty program the whole time that you're under that lease. So any, you know, big items that may come up, um, they cover, uh, so.
In my conversations with Eric on that, it, the numbers come out obviously that it's in the benefit to do the lease program versus a purchase. Um, the fact that after five years or whatever it is, you roll it in, get a brand new one instead of having a piece of machinery that who knows what the value of it is or whatever. So, um, I think it's a good move myself.
No, I, I appreciate you looking into it, evaluating it and briefing us on it.
I would ask, after any further conversation or questions, I would ask that, that a motion be presented that would allow me to sign that, that contract. That doesn't have to come, because it exceeds my authority under the procurement policy to be able to sign for fifty seven thousand dollars.
Keep doing that here in the next few days, the ones that get the paperwork to me, so.
So sort of coming back to the county court and having all three signatures on it, if you could just authorize me through a motion to sign on behalf of.
Final question is just from my own knowledge, where, where is the outreach maintenance station? That you have.
So you have Druzy, there's one, you have one in Andrews and you have one in Diamond.
Okay.
So again, those four blades, um, again, they just, they seem to average right at about a thousand hours a year. All four of them, including the one here.
What would be the cost of buying that piece of equipment outright?
Uh, probably with that one, about four hundred thousand.
And what would your life expectancy on the equipment probably be?
Um. Probably in that neighborhood of ten years before you would have to do major. Um, for an example, we did, uh, we purchased the one that we have here. Um, in Burns, we purchased that in two thousand and ten. And we, in twenty twenty, we basically took that blade, shipped it to Western States and they took it down to the frame and put it all back together again. Um, so again, the, if you want to come, and that's one that we own. If you took the cost per hour before we did that major overhaul, we were at forty two bucks and some change per hour. Um, the one that we're just rolling over out of this lease, we were at thirty eight point nine. So it, you know, it's not a big difference, but it is cheaper to actually do the lease if you wanna do that. Now, if you take in that total redo that we did with that blade and, and again, I don't think that's fair to analyze that right now because we haven't amortized those out enough. You're at seventy five bucks an hour, which again, that skews because you, we just did that.
But it is cost over a ten year period. Whereas a ten year period for a lease is a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Just give it back and you start over again. So, and again, it may one of these days get to a point where that threshold and the cost of, of that machinery and doing a lease doesn't work, it'd be better off just to buy it. But a- again, as it's going right now, they're, they're, it's, the lease is, is better per hour, for us anyway.
And didn't you have one that needed a new transmission or something in it?
We did, that was on that last lease that we just, we just did last year. And those are the two blades, the one in Diamond and the one in, or the one in Druzy and the one in, in Diamond. And the one in Diamond, we're doing this time around, but the one in Druzy right at the very end came up with transmission problems and that's why we shipped it out and grabbed the, because the expense was gonna be astronomical.
But being on a lease, it was covered by the.
Covered, they just took it back and we started another lease.
I move to authorize Judge Hart to sign any of the contractual lease documents regarding this matter.
Second.
Most has been made the second and to authorize myself, Judge Hart, to sign and execute any lease agreement documents for the leasing of, uh, graders through, who's, who's it through?
Western States.
Through Western States. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? And hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Uh, next topic is Oregon Youth Conservation Corps, uh, from Mike, right?
I'm Tyson Wayne.
Or Tyson, okay. I didn't think you looked like mine.
No.
Um, so, yes, sir, you're up.
Awesome. Um, so I wanna thank you guys and we're, uh, here again to request your support, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for the program. Um, last year, I believe you guys said we had about two years left, so this would be probably the last year, it's not even happening. Like last year, I did have some of the kids, right, their impacts and how it's affected their lives and figured I'd read that to you guys again, quick. This one is Raymond Hallie. He says, O Y C has played an important role in my life, offering a supportive support space where I've been able to learn, improve and build strong connections. Through the program, I gained confidence and developed important skills like leadership, teamwork, communication, problem solving and a solid work ethic. It has also helped me find more clarity in my goals and direction. Most all, O Y C has taught me the value of community, unity and giving back, lessons that continue to shape who I am and who I want to become in the future. With everything the O Y C has taught me, I have turned into a more confident young man. One from April Locats. Oregon Youth Corps has had a huge positive impact on my life. It has helped me build confidence, responsibility and strong communication skills. Working with others through O Y C taught me teamwork and problem solving while also helping me learn to work independently. The program showed me that I enjoy hands-on work and want a career where I can stay active and make a difference. O Y C also gave me valuable experience for future, like filling out job applications and gaining job interview experience. Because of O Y C, I've become more outgoing, motivated and hardworking, which has also helped me succeed as an A S B president and an active F F A member. Overall, O Y C has helped me shape who I am today and open doors to my future. That's, that's really awesome.
They write very nice.
Yes.
Letters. Yeah.
So, uh, looking at the budget for the last two years, the, the contribution has been seventeen five for the last three years, actually.
Okay.
Our, our balance in the fund is thirty thousand nine hundred and sixty two dollars right now today.
Gotcha.
Um, so it would be, you know, discussion of the court, what, uh, you know, we wanna stretch that evenly over the next couple of years or stick with the seventeen and then whatever the balance is the end of next year.
I'd like to hear Tyson what he thinks, if you want the amount you're requesting this year and then the, what's remaining next year.
As far as I know, communicating with my, um, that's, that's set for that, we've taken some hard hits this year, so we, we kinda need it.
So you would like the amount you're requesting this year and then the, whatever the, that lesser remaining amount next year and then we're done?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what we had talked about.
So, uh, a contribution of seventeen five this year and then whatever the remaining is, we'll zero it out next year.
Exactly.
And, and for anyone that just is wondering what this is, is that many years ago when we had a commission on children and families, the comprehensive plan included strategies that relate to what O Y C C achieves and they're really the only provider in our county who did, who kinda met the requirements for that funding stream. We were able to, um, because our comprehensive plan mentioned that, um, using the funds over a period of years was very important. We were able to retain that yet even after the Commission on Children and Families went away. And so all these years since two thousand eleven, when, when that shut down and the state did away with all the commissions on children and families. We've had this money and been able to support O Y C C and it's great, thirteen years or so.
Yeah, it's been gone a long time.
Yeah, it's, it's about to run its course. Obviously, Harney County's general fund is not in good shape anymore and can't can't keep providing that out of our own funds, but, uh, we really, uh, I, I know I really appreciate having the county be associated with supporting you guys.
So that money came from state dollars previously?
Yes. Yes.
And, uh, do you mind me asking, what was that? Again, you said thirty three thousand, just like.
The, the balance as of today is thirty thousand nine hundred and sixty two.
Thirty thousand nine sixty.
And a little bit of change, huh?
Perfect.
Which obviously it'll continue to grow a little bit of interest on the balance for the next year. So they're probably looking at, uh, thirteen five-ish.
Okay, yeah.
I move to allocate seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to O Y C C from the fund we've discussed.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to make a contribution to Oregon Youth Conservation Corps in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for this fiscal year. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? And hearing none, motion carries. Um, so I, I have your, I have your letter here with the request on it and we'll process that through to accounts payable. Then.
Perfect.
They'll probably just mail it off to you.
Thank you.
All right?
Do you want me to add the letters to the agenda packet? So other people can go online and read the.
That's, uh, that's the same thing, yeah.
The student letters.
Oh, um, they're texted to me, I don't have to. Thank you, guys.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work you do.
I, yes, we try hard. They do really well, so we'll see about it.
Um, all right, next topic, old business, second reading of fee schedule. And again, as mentioned last time, um, says you have to read the whole thing in its entirety unless uh, find that spot again. Uh, written notice posted at the courthouse uh, and two other public places, which those were the library, I mean, the post offices?
Yes.
Uh, publication at least once in the newspaper of general circulation in the county. If no member of the governing body present at the meeting requests that the ordinance be read in full or if no later than one week before the first reading of the ordinance, a copy of its provided of it is provided, each member, copies of it are available at the headquarters of the governing body, one copy for each person who requests it, which I don't know if we've had any requests for it. Uh, and notice of the availability is given by and then those two location postings. So with that, then we can just read the ordinance by title.
And is, is the, uh, as soon as the second reading occurs, even if by title only, only is, does that make the ordinance take effect immediately? Or is there how much time?
Ninety days.
Ninety days.
Ninety days from the time of, from the second reading and enactment of the ordinance.
So does anyone figure out what that date is since it has to go on our, um, document?
Yep, Rick Stocker, the building inspector, uh, said that it would be June, January fifteenth, place to go date. You bet.
So it doesn't have to be exactly ninety days, just month? Okay. I, I would say it's probably a minimum of ninety days if it's like ninety two days or whatever. Administratively, that's the date that we select as the go date, so.
Okay. Uh, so in the County Court of Harney County of the state of Oregon, in the matter of establishing Harney County's unforeseen fee schedule for, a uniform fee schedule for various county departments, ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero one in the County Court of, of Harney County, Oregon, does ordain as follows. Purpose: Harney County provides core services to all citizens which are paid for through the annual tax base. On the whole, the county endeavors to proactively provide access to services in alignment with day-to-day activities and needs of its citizens. In some instances, special services are required or necessitated by various state statutes or to meet the needs of citizens who have requests of core services. The purpose of this ordinance is to outline the fees to be collected by Harney County Departments for performing services and to establish a uniform fee schedule. The ordinance is enacted pursuant to the authority granted to general law counties by O R S two oh three point zero three five, two oh three point zero six five and one nine two point four four zero. Fee schedule fees shall be charged and collected by the indicated department before the filing, recording or copying of such documents shall be completed. The table of all county fees can be found in Appendix A, B and C. Other fees may, may apply as assessed under Oregon Revised Statutes. And these, um, I think we have them on the county, on the website as well, don't we?
The fee schedule?
Yeah, yeah, so it's also available on a, on a county website. Enactment provisions. Conformance with law. Except as expressly provided herein, this ordinance shall in no way be substitute or eliminate the necessity of conforming with any and all state and federal laws, rules and regulations, including but not limited to the payment of all other fees required by law and other ordinances which are now or may be in the future in effect which relate to the requirement provided in this, or requirements provided in this ordinance. Separability, if any action, action, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase or portion of this ordinance, ordinance for any reason held in, is, is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, such portion shall be deemed as a separate, distinct and independent provision and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portion of the ordinance. Effective date, uh, this ordinance shall take effect on January fifteenth. Twenty twenty six. Upon its adoption and all previous orders, resolutions or ordinance setting fees con- fees conflicting with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed and will be of no further force and effect. Signed. And court. Um, any, any other discussion? And I wanted to open it up after, after any discussion by the court, I wanna open it up to the public and anybody on, online.
I, I have concerns over the increase in our fees overall, but I realize that many of our fees are increasing as a reaction to the increased cost of business with the state. And there's not much we can do about that except continued advocacy and lobbying legislatively to try and bring some of those fees down. In terms of the Building Department and Environmental Services in particular, I don't think that we have enough years worth of data to, to show that we are, to show that those fees aren't more than they need to be, we're providing the service. However, I do think based on some of the data that our building director has given us, it's clear that we are issuing more permits, which to me means we are servicing more people, which is the point, keeping people in compliance, servicing more people. And in terms of environmental services, that's a new program, so we don't have any years worth of data. But I do know that we are able to service people now that weren't previously being serviced, not just for us, but across our whole region. And I'm optimistic that with both of those departments, because of their ambitiousness and helping some of our neighbor counties, that's gonna help bring down administrative costs for our residents. So I am in favor of the fee schedule as presented.
I am too. I don't, no one likes fees to go up, but, um, we are not a county that is charging, overcharging fees in relation to the cost of doing business, the state fees and what other counties do. And, um, it doesn't, it hurts the county if we don't raise the fees at this point. And, uh, and the fact that in the Building Department, it's not slowing things down at all. And the fact that we have the ability to do commercial inspections and approvals, et cetera, and our environmental, uh, and onsite septic are helping numerous counties in eastern Oregon is a great thing. I, I support this.
And I would say, um, you know, while some fees are mandated by state or they have limits that are mandated by state, by the state, um, other fees are just that, the cost of doing business and being able to pay salaries and materials and supplies in order to run a program. And, and some of those instances, some of these fees and, um, I see building official staffers on, online. I don't remember the exact number of years, but in some cases, some of these fees hadn't been increased in twelve, fifteen? Twelve, fifteen, twenty years, what was that, Rick? You're on mute.
There we go, sorry about that. Um, yeah, it had actually been twenty plus years that the fees hadn't been increased. And just as an example, uh Lake County is going through the same issue right now where they didn't raise the fees because they felt it would. Hurt the growth and now they're really feeling it because they are trying to figure out where to get the money to support the program.
I, I would say though too, that in, in addition to the fee increases, our service is, has increased in, in timeliness. Um, and, and my general impression of what I hear um, from the public and from those that, that have to pay these fees. Is it, is that uh, it's a little easier to swallow the increase in fees. Because the service is being provided in a more timely manner than what had previously been, been done as well. Um, is that, is that in line, Rick?
Yes, yeah, we're providing quicker service, quicker turnarounds on plan reviews. Um, helping contractors and homeowners get their projects done quicker, uh, time is money.
I, I have heard from some people involved in the building trades. That they're frustrated with fees, but as has been pointed out, the fees hadn't been adjusted in a long, long time. And then I hear from other people in the building trades that say our ability to get inspections done in a timely fashion. Is not, not found in other places, they, they've done business in Idaho and in western Oregon. And they really. Uh, they're, they're really pleased with how quickly they can have services done. And so I think that's a great thing, and Rick, you've talked a few times about putting together metrics and some of the information that you shared with us. I am pretty confident that as time goes on and we have all of that data and metrics, we're gonna. We're gonna keep those prices as, as close as we can. For our, for residents, so I appreciate you putting those metrics together in that data because that was really helpful to look at, especially when you compare. Like an average so far this year of forty-one permits issued a month compared to three years ago was thirty-one to thirty-six or something like that.
Yeah, and fees are never popular, um, but unfortunately, we, you know, we have a choice, we have. You know, we can bring back the state to do the work and they can take all the money and, and be here once a week or two or three times a month. And that makes it very difficult to get business done. Um, so the, the quicker we can do this stuff, the, the quicker you can build things here, especially with the limited building season that Harney County has. Um, we're definitely growing the program and, and providing better service and getting a lot of great feedback and. If you go to the western side of the state, not only are they slowing down significantly over the year, over there. Um, we have a lot of their contractors bidding work in our area. Um, so we're staying busy, we're growing the program. And we're providing great service to people and it's had a big impact, I think.
Whether you're a homeowner who is, is building a new home. And wants to get that home uh done and completed and get moved into their new dream home. Or it's a commercial aspect of where somebody is, is adding on or, or starting a new uh commercial uh facility. The time to market plays a big, a big role there. And from the time that somebody gets a loan from a bank to build a building. And then from the time that they can open the door and have their product going out the door makes a big difference in the bottom line. So again, those, those uh quicker turnaround times and inspections and, and permits is, I think, well worth it.
And, and just a quick point, um, while you guys were sitting here talking uh earlier. I've been doing FaceTime inspections in uh Grant County. And so, while I'm sitting here in a meeting, I'm able to do inspections in another county. Which brings more profit to, you know, and, and money to Harney County virtually. Uh, and they actually, the inspections were in Fox, so, what, you know, we're. Two, two and a half hours away, we're doing virtual inspections to keep their contractors going at the same time we're doing other things here.
Yeah, um, just a little background for people who may not know, but when, when our, most of our commercial and, and. Uh, I think most of our residential and whatnot was done in-house, but the commercial stuff was all, was all done by state agencies. And when I first took office and found that. Beyond the twelve percent that we have to provide to the state for every permit. Then what was left from that, ninety percent of those remaining dollars went to the state for their inspection. Um, services and again, it might be two weeks, three weeks, or a month before those inspections were. Were um conducted, so it was obvious at that point that this is, you know, it's not providing a good service to our community. And it wasn't financially smart either, so this is where we're at today.
And I think it's important to note that, to my knowledge, aside from things like. Maps that we print off and charge fifty cents for that, which is a recommended practice because we incur a cost in time and materials for that. But a lot of these other fees are mandated by the state and so it's, Harney County is not choosing to impose these fees. We are trying to be in accordance with state statute. And I think that's important for people to understand, we're not just trying to make money making more.
People would have to pay the fees whether they went to the state or the Harney County, so.
And Rob, one of, one of your uh. Comments about the metrics, um, I think it's important that we continue to look at these metrics and understand them and. Two or three times at least a year, if not more, we're, we're breaking them down, looking at where we're at and then. When I come to you this next spring for a fee increase, it's going to be based on consumer price index. So that we can base a fee on what it costs to actually do business. So if it's a, a two point five percent C P I that year, that's what our fee increase is based on, not just an arbitrary number that I come up. Or county court comes up with, it's based on what, what it costs as inflation grows and things like that.
I, I think some of the figures that you put together about. The estimated valuation of building that was done in previous years is also a really great metric to. To recognize how much growth is or isn't going on in the county, especially if we take into consideration inflation, but. It's good to see those black and white numbers so that we can justify that there actually is growth or that we need attention in some areas.
So, um, anybody else online or anybody in the room? Yes, ma'am.
Well, uh Barbara Kennedy, uh, I was wondering if you would like an update on the referendum on the state. For uh dealing with the O dot fees, now or.
Okay, well, we're on topic with, with our fees right now.
Right, I was just going by what Rob said in terms of, one affect any other maybe. It doesn't make any difference to me, I was just gonna offer it if you wanted it.
Yeah, I don't think the O dot.
About in terms of, of taking it to the voters.
Could, could we maybe hear about that, like right prior to deliberations, I would like to hear about it, but I. Because it's an O dot matter, I don't think it takes these county fees.
Uh, uh, prior to court deliberation, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't think the two are gonna, are gonna. Affect each other, so staying on topic with, with our fees here, so, um, any other? Any other um comments or questions in regards to our fee schedule?
How does that contribute to the Harney County's budget, like the general fund and that kind of?
It, it depends on department by department, like the building fund fees and the environmental services fees have to stay within those programs. So depending on where the fees are being charged from, like um. Uh, some fees, maybe clerks fees or something, have to stay within the clerks program. Um, other generic fees would be general fund, just in general that would come to the general fund. So you have to break down, you have to kind of sit down, look at the fee schedule and say, okay, these ones are gonna stay here, these ones go to the general fund, these ones go to. Building, these, so it, it's kind of hard to. You know, to, to answer that question.
So it could have a positive effect on the general fund?
It could, but our fees, a lot of those other smaller fees that would be in general fund are really like um. Um, what was it, there's, there's one that they authorized in the legislative session this year that could be increased by ten dollars. It was some, I think it was marriage license filings. And um, then we talked about using those funds potentially for um circuit court, um. This, what's the program that, that for divorces, people have to get um counseling or, or receive counseling before. Before the divorce decree. Um, the little bit that we would, the little bit that we would generate through that is not going to fund that program. Um, and it, and so therefore you kind of have to ask, why are we passing this fee or why are we increasing this fee upon the people? In marriage license, so, so again, it depends on what the fee is. And whether it ha, is gonna have a big impact or if it's just a little bit, really, most of our fees don't bring that much revenue to the county.
In some of those departments, like the building department, for example, though. If they can become self-sufficient, it's less of a burden on the general fund, so it does have a positive impact in that way, if for example, their budget was. A quarter of a million, which I'm just throwing that out there, it's not accurate, but if it were and it had been supplemented with general fund previously. Now frees up those funds to do other things.
Yeah, indirectly, so it has an indirect positive effect on the general fund.
What, question to the court, on the county surveyor fees? Did that, did anything change from when we were having our dialogue some months back?
Um. Yes and no. So, after we had that conversation, uh, and we need to enter into an agreement with the surveyor. Uh, I went back and looked at the, at the budget and somewhere between the proposed, well, the uh. We have the proposed budget and then the um approved budget and then the adopted budget. The increase, I had put fifteen thousand dollars in there to increase it, which should have made it, I think, around eighteen thousand dollar uh balance in that line. It didn't take, so I'm still down to three thousand dollars, which is not going to be enough to pay a year's worth of contract with the surveyor. So I'm trying to work on some other topics, like we can still do, we can still do the um, the, the survey marker.
But are any of the fees, are any fees on the fee schedule relating to the ability to fund the surveyor services? And if not, is that something we need to be working on for the next time we have to amend a fee schedule?
In, in order so that the, that the fees, because there's going to be work that's in-house by the county that we won't collect any fees for.
Right.
But anything that's outside, like yes, the um. Um, I have a request for an easement, a right-of-way easement across county, piece of county property to a kind of a landlocked piece of private property. And, and the applicant is going to pay those fees directly to the surveyor.
I just bring it up because I hadn't heard anything since we had that meeting and. I was hoping we're progressing.
Yeah, um, well, so like I said, what I'm wanting to do is I'm still working towards. Delineating a specific space to get those surveyor records into. And um, and working on that part of it, and then again, they can still do the monument. Um, work that needs to be done because there's a separate fund for that. So there is surveyor work that we could do until we get that budget line cleared up and actually have money to retain and, and have those services throughout the year.
Okay, so will we be needing to have separate from fees um, a contract with the individual?
We will. We've appointed, individuals appointed, but we need to have a, a. A, an agreement with them as to what we're gonna pay, and again, with that budget error. I don't have the money to pay them, so I'm not gonna, I'm not looking at executing that agreement until next budget.
Alright, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So if you're building, like I'm gonna use the building department as an example, and you're doing um, commercial inspections and stuff by. Video, um, who's carrying the liability on, is Harney County carrying it or? All these other counties that are going to and doing these commercial inspections on and stuff, in case something isn't built. Uh, to code and they didn't catch it on the virtual inspection that they've done?
So virtual, first off, uh, virtual inspections were even being done by the state. In most cases, the, the inspections that the state was doing, in most cases. Our, our staff, county staff was going out with their phone and doing this. And then the individual with the state that was in Bend or Portland or wherever was doing that. That, that inspection or signing off on that inspection, so the virtual part of it is nothing new, it's something that's been done for quite some.
Wasn't the liability, um, at the end of the day, if something wasn't built according to code. On the stage at that point, so if you're taking over that responsibility, are we moving that liability to Harney County?
Um, Rick, are you still there?
Yeah, I, I'd have to review the I G A for that specific question on liability, um, but uh. We only do virtual inspections for what I would term as simple inspections, today was uh, some shower pans, things like that. Structural components, life, fire, life and safety, the important things that we need to be on site for, we're on site for, framing. Things like that, but simple inspections that we can do in a minute or two instead of a hour-long drive. Uh, that's how we do it.
But i- in general though, I mean, after review of the I G A with say Grant County. Um, I'm wondering that there's a, a, an indemnification. Uh, paragraph as most contracts do have, that, that Grant County would hold us. Would indemnify Harney County and hold us harmless on that if it's work being done in their county.
And is our. We, we are, we are indemnif, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, do we have bonding for you, Rick, or, you know? Is that a requirement of, of your um expertise now that you're bonded?
No, there is indemnification in that I G A, um, but uh, um. I, I don't have it sitting in front of me, so I don't want to try and quote something out of it that would be incorrect.
Um, but beyond that, just in general for whether it's in our county or another county. That, that's a good question, is there any kind of a need for bonding for you and, and your department for inspections?
Uh, not typically because um, one of the things that I always tell uh contractors and have talked with us about this is. Number one, we don't catch everything, we can't, we're not, we don't have enough time to catch every little thing. And so, even when we're incorrect or have a, uh, the state has. Uh, O R Ss and O A Rs in place that even when we're incorrect, we're still not held responsible for. You know, things that are incorrect, and in plan reviews and things like that, we provide documentation with our plan reviews that say. We don't ca, can't catch everything and we're not responsible for errors or omissions.
Good question, Renee.
Can, can I, can I just expand real quick on the, the, the um woman before had asked a question? Um, the, wh- where we're making the biggest impact on general fund is the fact that we're not being supported by general fund anymore. And general fund was significantly supporting the building department for a lot of years. And up until this last year. We, we've corrected that and we're going in the right direction, we're, we're an enterprise fund, not a general fund, so. We're designed to, to fund ourselves and to work off of the permits that we sell, so that's our goal is to stay out of the general fund.
And we, we hit on that, um, and we've done that with a couple of other departments as well, um. Wherein relieving that burden, uh, I don't burden, it's the right, right word, I don't want to call it a burden, but. Relieving that uh financial obligation from general fund. And, and allowing us to have more funds within general fund for other purposes. So. Any other questions, discussion? Not hearing many, then I would uh entertain a motion to approve this ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one in the matter of establishing Harney County's. Uniform fee schedule for various county departments.
So, a motion has been made to um. Um, approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one in the matter. Of establishing Harney County's uniform fee schedule for various county departments as read. Any further discussion? All favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next topic, uh. Listening sessions at rural schools at our rural locations, um, Holly has. Reached out to some of the rural schools and, and contacts in those areas to try and find. When best times would work and whatnot, and I'm gonna let you kind of brief on what you've. When best times would work and whatnot, and I'm gonna let you kind of brief on what you've come across.
Well, French Glenn, the school board meetings are held every second Tuesday of every month. Uh, Diamond, the school board meetings are.
Do you know what time of day?
No, ma'am, it's the afternoon is what they told me. I don't know a specific time. It's usually like six or seven. Uh, Diamond has school board meetings uh, every second Monday of every month. Uh, Fields is waiting for the county courts to send them dates that would work for them, and they said that they will make something work. Um. Drusey, I've not been able to get ahold of anyone there. And then Crane and I are playing phone tag where they call me at seven A M. Where I'm not in the office till eight thirty, and then I call them back, and so we've gone in a loop so far. Waiting on that.
Um, so my idea with trying to schedule these rural county court listening sessions, um. Abbreviated county court sessions, whatever we wanna call them. I mean, I think they're kind of more in line as a listening session, work session type of a thing, because we're not really doing county business. We're just out there. To make ourselves available to those constituents in those rural areas. Um, my idea was to kind of co. Co-schedule them with other event that might be going on, such as a school board meeting, whether it's before or after. Um. Just to maybe kind of get a cap- captive audience that's there for, for school board issues, um, and we can consolidate our efforts. That was my idea. If the count, if the court would like to do something different, I mean, we still could use their facilities probably, but if uh. Guys would like to do something different, I'm all ears.
Well, I would like to say first that if you get something scheduled, I will attend. But in my experience, um, it's already mid-October. There's a lot of school-related things and sports and Christmas pageants and things that happen. And it gets really hard to schedule. It's, it's, it's if the community and, and yes, the schools are the heart of those rural communities. But if the community were a prominent person down there who knows a lot of the people can say, well, you know, we could make it work here or there. So i- if you schedule it, I will come, but um, good luck.
Aye.
That's my experience in it, because they wanna, they wanna hear us, but, and sometimes the school board meetings, we did it with Crane before. Um, by the time that meeting is there, they wanna take off. Just like anybody else does, because it's a couple hours of a meeting, et cetera. So it, it might work. Um.
On the other hand, we've had meetings where we've scheduled just ourselves for our, for our sole purpose as the county court. And one person or no person show up.
And, and again, I think that is not indicative of. Uh, a lack of interest in them engaging with us, but more I simply the, the rhythm of rural life. It is, you know.
We, we had talked in the past about potentially trying to do it an hour before the school board meeting or something. But I think especially if it's just gonna be a listening work session, it's almost like we're taking a public comment. Period in those rural areas to make it more accessible. Maybe we'd have better luck if we just did the thirty minutes before. And then if, if that doesn't allow enough time, in theory. At, at least they could reach out to us afterwards, or even after the school board meeting, we'd be available to talk to them, but thirty minutes is probably ample. My other question is, did you reach out to Riley, to Sun Tech School?
I did not reach out to Riley. Uh, Judge Hart said that they didn't have much attendance the last time. Pretty rural area.
And what's, there's a seven, isn't there?
There's what?
A seven. Oh, double O. Yeah, I should probably reach out.
Double O and Riley would kind of be like French Glenn and Diamond.
Right, yeah.
Um, I will add, though, that a lot of the people I've spoken with said that they could give us time, like, in, like, as an item on the school board's agenda. To try to help us capture an audience, so that's also something to think of.
Yeah, they offer that up. Might as well take advantage of it.
I, 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 I think it's important for us to make ourselves available to those rural um, communities and constituents. Um, it's finding the best way to do it.
Right.
Um, I'm. Whatever it takes, I'm, you know, and I know that drive to Fields, if it's. If we're there at six o'clock, then that means we're not getting back home until eight thirty to nine or something, so.
Always had great attendance for the Fields meetings.
But that's just part of, part of doing business too, so.
They're so far away they, they make it happen.
So any, any preferences? You wanna have Holly reach back and see if we can just be like an item on their agenda, school board agenda? For twenty or thirty minutes, and then would be done, or, I mean, you know, they can follow up if they need to, or anything, and we can follow up with them.
Sounds good.
Yep, and if, if they can't do that, maybe we can just have the thirty minutes before and catch people listening, coming in at least, maybe. But I am definitely in favor of going to all of those, I think. We hit them all once a year, I mean, good thing.
So let's just continue the coordination and see what we come up with. Alright, thank you. Um, new business, or no, wait a minute, uh, one last old business item, flood mitigation. Um. So we kind of talked briefly a little bit earlier with the roadmaster on, on some potential work on Foley. Um, the, the uh, community knowledge. Is, is saying that they didn't, you know, basically don't think it would matter or not. Um, but, but I wanna make sure that we've discovered or discussed, or. Anything we can potentially do, we need to do it now. Um, because we're gonna lose that opportunity as the winter sets in and then as spring hits. And we won't have that opportunity to do any kind of mitigation work then. So, you know, um, Commissioner Frank, do you have any other, any of your ideas or conversations you had with people on it?
Uh, probably a month ago. The roadmaster reached out and said that he had an arch culvert available, because one of the, one of the preferred alternatives in the Kleinschmidt study. I believe it was alternative eight, had to do with putting a bigger culvert under a fully dry that would allow water to move east. And I went out with the planning director and the roadmaster on Friday. And it turns out his arch culvert is not wide enough for the roadbed, so it won't work and. To get extensions for it was tens of thousands of dollars. So we talked about the possibility of putting in. A series of smaller culverts, and we also talked about. Putting in a series of smaller culverts in one place, so that if you cut the roadway, you only have to cut it in one place, which will lower your machinery. Costs. And we talked about the potential of putting those culverts. Up like maybe a foot off of ground elevation, so that they only are activated during a flood event. But we definitely recognize that we need to have an engineer or reengage with Kleinschmidt, so that they can model. How will that affect other houses' flood elevation? Because one of the things Kleinschmidt did. Was they were able to identify how many houses would be taken out of flood danger and how many houses would be put into flood danger with each alternative. And if I remember correctly, we don't have funds available till twenty-seven. We could potentially take a loan, but we could only do it for work, not for the study associated with it. And unless we can reengage with Kleinschmidt to have them run their model with twenty-twenty-five data. I don't know how we can get concrete data. And even that being said, I think some of the local wisdom. Would be just as important, if not more important than that. So I'm not really sure where to proceed from here, as the judge said. If we're gonna do, if we're gonna do something this year, it needs to be initiated almost immediately, so that we can beat the weather. But we don't wanna, we don't wanna chunk a bunch of money away to put in some culverts if they're gonna have an adverse effect or no effect. So.
So I have a, I have a meeting tomorrow with. Uh, second, we get, uh, people added here. Um, I have a meeting tomorrow with Courtney Crowell from the governor's office, Regional Solutions. And Feather Sam Houston's from Business Oregon, and I had asked to them, I posed the question to them about. Um, what would be authorized uses for this money and, and if it's authorized in the end. You, you know, use of the money, would it then be authorized to, to get a loan of some kind through Business Oregon to pay for it now and then pay it back? City of Burns is doing that with their plumbing, their sewer system, sanitary sewer system, um. And taking a loan out for that. Now they'll have to pay the interest on that loan, because you can't use the loan to pay off, or the. The awarded funds to pay off the interest. So they'll have to, the city will have to come up with funds to pay off the interest on that. And we would, sure would be in the same boat. And now the estimate has been given of a hundred thousand dollars for Kleinschmidt to reengage. And then any mitigation work that we might do this fall definitely would be covered, but if we take that alone, we're gonna have to pay that interest on it until. Until mid to late twenty-twenty-seven, when we are awarded those funds, when we receive those funds.
And, and the roadmaster has said more than once that depending on the scope of the project. He may, may be able to view the project itself, if he knows that he'll be reimbursed when we get those funds, so he might not have to take out a loan for the actual work. And another point that I discussed with our planning director, that I think is important to point out to the state, when you talk with Courtney Crowell. And with Feather, is. By them not allowing us flexibility with how we can use those funds, if, it's hard for us as a governing body to justify. An expensive project if we don't have the data to back up how effective it'll be. And so if they don't allow us the flexibility, if we have another snowy year. We will likely suffer another flood. And the amount of money that they spent to send resources here, not just in the physical resources, but in the manpower and agency hours they sent. Way trumps them giving us access to funds that we can use now to be proactive, so hopefully they.
Is, is the discussion uh, so far about providing that flexibility for the funds? Does that sound like a hard stop no, or?
I, I don't know yet. I, I posed that question to them. They've had discussions amongst themselves, and then be more of an update for me, I think tomorrow, on what they come up, what they came up with.
I'd appreciate if you'd just flat out ask that either way, no matter how it goes, if we can give that flexibility, so that.
We have to, uh, along with the awarded funds, we have to um. Fill out a, a project description. Um, that goes back to the state on what we're gonna use the money for, and I've expressed to them that. While we have a plan that was done, or a survey that was done in twenty twenty-ish?
Twenty, twenty-one, maybe completed in twenty-two.
Um, that has some proposed prob- uh, uh, projects in it. But now with the data from our actual event this year, is that data still viable? And, and it, and it would be more, a better. Uh, fiscal responsible, fiscally responsible, to look at that data and make sure that the projects that we're doing. Are really gonna help, should we experience something similar again. So I haven't even been able to, and that's part of this phone call tomorrow. I haven't been able to do a, do that project description on it. And, and my question to them is, okay, so if we fill it out for now, saying. We're gonna use these eight proposed projects out of the Kleinschmidt um, survey and study. Do we have flexibility to change that? That if, once we reengage Kleinschmidt and they say, well, after really looking at things. We would propose different projects, or, or change the scope of those projects. So, so are we gonna have flexibility? Yeah, that is one of my questions is to them. Are we gonna have? Be locked in once I fill out that project description? Are we gonna be locked into that, to that proposition? So it's, we'll see tomorrow.
Feel like we are unsure about when to engage with the public and to what extent. I feel like at the very least, we need to have conversations with the surrounding landlords. That'll be impacted, but there's no point in having those conversations unless we know what type of project we're even proposing, so. That'll be great to hear what that conversation yields.
I have a question.
Yes.
Have you guys thought about maintaining the, where the water goes? From point A down through the county, like dredging the river or fixing anything? Downstream versus just in that local.
I think it's probably a matter of money, more than anything. The City of Burns used to do that all the time up until. The nineties?
Seventies when they.
Oh, okay.
Stopped.
I mean, that was just, it's within, the stuff within the city limits.
Well, I'm talking like Silvies, the Silvies River, like. The whole, the whole.
Yeah, some is, some is within the city limits, so, uh, the flow. Um, it's a matter of money on, on. I mean, that's just one, one thing, is the money the county or the cities have is, is not there to do, to do it. All the time, but this, it has to be done at this point somehow.
We do. It's a very complex issue, and what you're describing with cleaning out the river is definitely part of the conversation. But in trying to identify things that we could get the most bang for our buck and get done quickly. With the D S L permitting that would be required with that, and we've had conversations with D S L and Water and Water Resource Department about if. If they own the water and they own the riverbed, and are they not responsible for keeping it flowing as it should? What is their responsibility when we have thousands of acre feet of floodwater, but?
I mean, maybe reaching out to the landowners, they may have history. Longer than seventies, possibly, you know, that. Back in the day, it was blah, 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 and it seemed to flow the water away from town, or, you, you know what I mean?
One, one of those historical perspectives that, that I just heard from yesterday, I think it was. Is that the individual who has property out in that area, um, basically said, we're not gonna see that again. I don't wanna rely on that. And with, with, with the scar, the burn scar that we have. And the potential that they're saying already for a heavy snow year again, we could definitely be right back in April next year. We could be right back where we were in April this year. So, so you can't one hundred percent rely on that. Historical perspective from the landowners either, or I, I don't wanna get caught, so, oh, well, they said it wouldn't happen, and boom, here we are.
I'm not saying that it won't happen, because in the timeframe I've lived here, it's been multiple times that it's flooded.
Yeah.
I mean, so, I'm just saying, you know, like, what it was before. And what modifications have been made to the water flow. That's making, there's a possible impact on how it affects.
Yeah, absolutely. Water, water, water is all about volume and, and how you can move it from point A to point B. Um, there wasn't enough volume this year in order for that water to move through our community fast enough to get it away from our community. And part of that comes from, like you mentioned, the dredging of, of the river, cleaning out the, the vegetative debris and whatnot. And that's on in discussion as well. We've had, we've had a couple of different conversations with the Army Corps of Engineers. They've been engaged in this situation since April of this year, when we first started getting our first indicators of flooding. Um, they came out, and then they've been out since with the water receding and taking a look at things again. So we are engaged with them and, and, you know, whatever plan comes up, I would hope. That one of those elements of the projects is, is some cleaning out of the, of the channel, and, and maybe some work up, upriver. Um, wherein, you know, maybe some other debris cleared out in the channel there, or even projects further up, upriver. With control measures, that we can control that water as it's coming down and release it in a more orderly manner. So. So we're looking at a lot of those different options. It's, and it, it's just tough to put something together in six months' time.
I think the questions have been good from these two ladies back in the back, but I would ask their names for. The tenants.
Heidi Jenkins.
Renee Palmer.
Fine, thank you. Oh, that's alright.
I think it's getting any support from like the Forest Service, or, because obviously the Silvies River flows through the forest as well. And so they would have, where it goes through their property and stuff, they would have different cleaning sources, different, um. I mean, I guess environmental impact studies that may have already exist, or they would be responsible for. Portions of the river, not just the county and the cities, as it, when it takes us out here.
Uh, most, most of the river channel up the, up the canyon. Well, I must say, most, a, a big portion of it is private. It is privately owned on both sides of the river. Um, and then you get into Bureau of Land Management, B L M lands, public lands, and then eventually into forest lands, so. Yeah, I mean, eventually, kind of once we decide maybe on what, what approach we wanna take, then those agencies are definitely gonna have to be at the table. Um, if, if, if we were to go just grandiose plans, say if we were gonna go for a, a reservoir. Then definitely we're gonna have to have B L M Forest Service, Fish and Wildlife Service. You know, who knows what other agencies involved and, and at the table for those, those kind of projects to go through.
Make sure you smell COVID fast and properly.
Well, I mean, think about not just the water control measures, but the, the, the revenue, the, the recreational, the. The economic effects to our community that that could bring, something like that. There, it's more than just flood mitigation. So, um, nothing concrete to say on flood mitigation as far as, I mean, it's, it's in progress. We're discussing having conversations with people, finding out what we can do with funds that we've been awarded. And trying to narrow down. With funds that we've been awarded and trying to narrow down projects and the scope of those projects to make a difference. Anything else, Commissioner? Um so the next. Next topic then is new business and we are at road naming application. I think Bryce is on. Online, but we have an application. A road naming request notification.
I am online if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Bryce. Letter concerning.
Bryce, do we have to have a name on this road if there's not three homes? Is it three homes or three buildings?
Three homes, so. There's three addresses currently on the access road and it was purchased by Alicia Benz. And she's no longer, it's no longer Ammon Ranch Road, so or Ammon Ranch, so she'd like to rename the road.
I I I think this is the first time I've seen one that was this specific type of a situation.
Yeah, I've never seen a road renamed in twenty three years.
It sounds like the applicant is willing to pay all the costs of signage.
Correct. She paid an eighty dollar um application fee already and then shook over the cost of the sign.
Are there potential implications? In changing the name of that road in terms of emergency services or mapping or anything like that?
Um we send out notifications to um all the the post office and. I handle the nine one one mapping, so I mean, everything will be updated and. Um everybody will have the same records.
When there is a planning decision, for instance, they usually contact people within a certain radius. So that they have an opportunity for input. Is anything like that done with renaming or because this is the first time we've seen it in twenty three years, we're not sure?
So the standard procedure is if a road, somebody comes in. If the third dwelling, we require the road be named. So we will contact everybody that that road. Has an effect on. Um so we'll send out notifications to get their input. But in this si- situation, the road is coming off of Forest Service Road on BLM and it's not crossing anybody's property and they own. The property adjacent.
So the proposed. The proposed name change from Almond Ranch Road would be to Moo Meadows Road, is that correct?
Correct.
And is Moo Meadows, is that a geographical? Location there that, I mean, that has that name?
I do not believe so.
I don't wanna get into a situation where down the road, somebody else buys it and then wants to change it to something else. Is it specific to their to their operation or anything, or is it more generic in nature? Do you know?
Uh she didn't state, um but I'm assuming they just picked the. I I don't know. I didn't, um she didn't.
Me, it feels unnecessary, but I feel like if the applicant is the only person affected by the change and they're willing to cover all the costs of making the change. Do you have any good arguments in opposition of passing this?
Again, they're the only one affected by the change. There's the only majority of the property around the. The um at the partial that's being readdressed and there's adjacent to BLM and.
I I don't have a problem with it. I just wanna make sure that it's not, we're changing it to. To Hart Road and then somebody down the road wants it to be Smith Road. You know, if it's something more generic in nature that'll stand the test of time, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, if if we suddenly get a lot of renaming, um but they they aren't as um. Independent as this road seems to be and would have more effect in emergency response and other various things to where renaming of roads. Yeah, now this is first renaming one that I've I've seen.
I I'm sorry, Bryce, the the length of this road on the application, it says it's checked as a private road. Does the length of this road traverse? Public lands?
It's the the first portion of the road is crossing BLM. Then it goes directly onto their property. I mean, it's historically been named. They're just wanting to change the name from a ranch that doesn't exist anymore.
You don't foresee any unintended unintended consequences to it as far as nine one one or any any other services that might be affected by it?
I do not.
I move to approve the application to rename said road. With a resolution number to determine by an executive.
Do we have um the next available resolution number?
It's twenty three.
Twenty twenty five dash twenty three.
And then um. Suffix, is it gonna be Moo Meadows Road?
Yes, that will not change.
Have a motion? I'll second.
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash twenty three in the matter of road. Road naming in the county of Harney. Uh as described Moose Meadow Road.
Just for, well, just for clarity, did you make a motion, Commissioner Frank?
I did, that's fine. If that's trumped by one that actually has the resolution number, it's fine. You got it.
Okay. And I'll second. So motion has been made and seconded to approve road naming uh request. Changing. Almond Ranch Road to Moo Meadows Road. Um. Resolution number twenty twenty five dash twenty three in the matter of road naming in the county of Harney, State of Oregon. Uh resolution contains legal description. I'm not gonna read all of it, it's in the packet. Whereas Harney County Court reviewed the application and found the proposed road name to be consistent with Harney County zoning ordinance. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing that motion carries. Next topic on the agenda is courthouse improvement IGA between Harney County. Uh and the Oregon Judicial Department. It's actually, um it's the the funds that were awarded in twenty twenty three long session. For um. Uh court-related services as it pertained to the then Justice Center project. A request was made this year in a long session to reauthorize it for for. Same purposes, but in a different format. Uh instead of in the in the Lincoln Building, it'll be court-related services as it pertains in the construction of the Harney County Jail. Um attorney-client rooms, interview rooms, remote appearance room. Uh court access, any of those type of features and elements within the construction of the jail. Um would be used from this three million dollars. So we we negotiated with Oregon Judicial Department to have them. Uh transfer those funds to us so that it would just streamline the the uh. Availability of funds when when construction starts. And um in the agreement, they have obviously put in a lot of uh requirements on reporting and um. And authorized uses for these funds. This IGA has been forwarded to. We didn't add the. County Court signatures. On this. This one, because of the size of the amount of money in the agreement, whatever, I'd like to have signatures from the entire county court versus um. Okay, yeah, there's another signature signature box on page eight.
Has this been reviewed by county council?
Yes. Yeah, he he said it looked fine. The only concern that he had was of the stipulations. But what we're gonna, what I've done is I've forwarded a copy of this uh agreement, this IGA to the to the attorney that's preparing the contract. Between the county and the and the design construction firm, so that it's it's uh incorporated into that. And then they're aware of of the requirements as well.
And for any of the uh managerial uh duties that you will have in your oversight. And coordinate a role, it's um are you fine with everything you've added in this?
Yeah, it's just what we're gonna have to do to to get through the project. Um I it is gonna be sensitive to the fact to make sure that that as we. When we get the plan for the jail, which we have a meeting. Next week. I think it's the twenty sixth, something like that. Um. Which maybe not, that might be a Sunday. Anyway, I think it's sometime next week I have a meeting. We have a tentative meeting scheduled with the sheriff, myself and the design. Build firm um to kind of look and see what they've come up with so far. So as that evolves and we identify the elements within that plan that can be built. Or or these funds can be used for, then we will send to uh OJD. Again, those plans and the portions that we're gonna uh propose to be used use these funds for, and then they'll sign off on it. To be honest with you, my hope was to get this done a lot sooner and have this three million dollars sitting in our account. And be able to capitalize on the interest that it withdraw until we were ready to start spending it. We get the, even if we get the funds next month between now and the, you know, four months down the road and we start construction, we're not gonna have a whole lot of built up in interest, but. That's kind of what I was hoping for, but it will it will streamline um. Requests for funds, instead of having to do those requests for funds, we'll have it all in our our account. We're probably gonna have to create in the next month or two for to receive these funds and to use the jail reserve funds themselves in conversation with the treasurer. Um. An actual uh project fund, like the event center fund, to expend these funds out of.
And all of the quarterly reporting will be your responsibility?
Yeah, between myself and and the contractor. This contractor is gonna gonna play a role in. And ensuring, number one, identifying what portions of it are. Against this of these funds. You have, I didn't realize there were two separate sections with signatures on it. Is this the way, is this the way it came to us with the signature section in between here?
Uh, I'll show you. So. You look at this, it had him on two sides of the page, but this just said Harney County Port, and there wasn't a space to sign.
Is this the original prone?
This is what I just.
Just clearing.
But we're just trying to fix the formatting to have signatures on it.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm looking for the original. The original format, because it didn't have places on it for the. For the court itself to sign, it had one signature box. Yeah, so what page is that?
That's.
So was there, what's on page five, where these other ones, or page six?
For a lot of times, the. Judge signs.
Did you add those? What was the original version that came to us?
I don't have that, um but it looks just like page eight on this. Or have this format.
Moving up a half hour, I didn't get my Starbucks, so.
There's some coffee in the break room.
That's my Teresa County Court dates and I guess those days.
Was this an even three now that we're talking?
Yes.
Wait, something, you want a cup of coffee, Patty?
No, thanks.
It's really good.
I'm sorry, I just, because of time on this though, I wanna make sure we've got it right.
Yeah, I don't know what.
I bet you can find some stuff in there if I ride around the bridge to kind of juice it up a little bit for you.
Thank you, I'm fine. I drank enough bad coffee in the morning before I could move backwards.
Address set forth was as confirmed by your return. So so that address or that box. Was just a like a point of contact information. That one wasn't a signature box on six. That one wasn't a signature box on six.
Oh, okay.
See, see how that's, so this is the point of contact at O J D, this would be the point of contact with Harney County, and you have my name, title, email. And address. And then the actual signatures for. For the I G A are on page eight, needed to have all three.
The signature, well, I, the one I printed off has signatures for eight, so now if he just wanted to print that page.
Page.
I can leave and swap that, you see that?
Okay. So page six, I'm gonna, uh, come on. I'm gonna include my information in it then, and then I'll print it. And we'll insert that page.
Thank you. I always say like a. Which of course Jeff takes greatest exception to.
Sometimes it almost seems like the state and its agencies are not trying to make it easier to do business with them. That's an awful lot of legal reason there. Just give us two million dollars so we can build a jail, it's not out of a foreign movie.
Well, and we. We, um. It took, between state lawyers and whoever was looking at it at the, at O J D's end. It took a month to get this to us.
I'm not surprised.
And the funds have been sitting there since two thousand and twenty-three, so it's not. I'm gonna print this one, village. Yeah, so did. Well, it might change the. From here on, let me look and see what the, what the content on the pages, cause I think it might change, it pulled it up, so, I think. Darn it, probably just gonna have to print the whole thing, because it changed the. It changed where it landed. So what are we gonna do? We're gonna keep working with that right now, or? Yeah, I'm, we're just about there. I wanna have this signed today, so it takes a couple minutes to get this right. So. Page. Eight. What's at the header of page eight?
The header of page eight.
Starts with.
Either part we made to make this agree.
Yeah, see, and this one's got, uh. I'm just gonna reprint, well, except I don't have the signature boxes on mine for the county court. On page eight. So what do you have?
Okay.
Well, that one does not either. If you have a copy that has the signature box on page eight on it. Okay, this is, this, this is good, it just needs to have county court signature boxes on page eight, I'm gonna send this document to you.
Art, it's worth letting you know because you've expressed concern over the over-horizon radar project. That one thing that you have said before that kind of piqued my interest. Was even if it's a passive radar, what that could potentially do to migrat-, and maybe you didn't say this, maybe I just inferred it. But what it could potentially do to migratory birds with their signals, and so I did reach out to the refuge manager just to put that project on his radar. But of course, it was probably the day they shut down or shortly after.
I had talked to you before.
I think that's a valid concern.
He had said that the refuge, uh, had an agreement with the military that they wouldn't do anything that would be.
And that should include the entire. So, but I just need to get the signature blocks for the core off page eight. How to push everything down, and if it does push it down, it's the after from there on.
But my concern is that all of the focus of getting permission and advertising and everything is in Lake or Mount here county. And Harney County is the one that I think will be impacted the most. And I feel like they're being ignored.
So it, it, it's a valid concern that, that, you know, the radio waves, whatever. Between here and Lakeview and anything that flies through it could be affected, but is there any science on it? Do they know?
But that's what I want them to look at, is they're ignoring Harney County. And their, their, all their environmental impact studies or statements that they're collecting. Uh, as evidence that it wouldn't be impacted are, you know, they're not doing many studies in Harney County. They're, you know, so. It, it, it is a concern, I'm, I'm too old.
Well, I don't know, I mean, the science. The science of, the science of the radio waves and how they travel through the air and these specific type and what frequency they are, whatever. Is what it is, whether it's in Lake County or Mount here County or Harney County and what, how it affects, so I don't know as. I don't know as a specific study needs to be done in, in Harney County. It's just in general what. You know, I mean, cause if it's traveling over the top of us, what? What does anything that flies through that?
Big question, I mean, I, I've lived through the radiation days with all the nuclear experiments. Uh, we've lived through Agent Orange, we've lived through a lot of stuff that, uh, where everything was, you know, fine. And then we find out after the fact that it's not, and we know that, uh, solar affects, um. Uh, aquatic species. Uh, I don't know about aerial, uh, you know, what that's limitations are. My concern is like, um. All the things that they've been dumping us over, over the years to protect the ozone, whatever, you know.
The chemtrails?
Chemtrails, yeah, um. I, I don't think that they've been honest about it. And, and when I lived at Els, near Els West Air Force Base, I was right outside of the valley there, they destroyed our water system, you know, and, uh. I, I just kind of have questions about a lot of things that, that they do that impact us.
All right, immediately rails, I just.
It's real easy to say, oh, the government said, and so it's okay.
I have an expectation that our government will do their due diligence before doing projects, so. That's a reasonable expectation.
Like I said, I just lived through too much of this.
I don't know how these birds' antennas work, I don't know if it's gonna mess them up, but there's.
Okay.
Well, I would love to know, I'd like Bryce to figure out on a map exactly from Christmas Valley. To Whitehurst Ranch, uh, or, or their facilities there, uh, exactly where it goes in Harney County. Does it impact, uh, Virginia?
What about some of the environmental groups that are, are, you know, the nature conservancy and others that are. Uh, care very much about, uh, former Audubon Society care very much about the birds, so are they?
Getting involved. Concerned about what species are on the ground.
Sorry, I take this a field. I move that we approve intergovernmental agreement, O J D contract number twenty-two, six, zero, zero, four, one. As amended.
Uh, the only thing that was amended was just the signature blocks to make sure that they were in the right place and that information was there. Second?
A second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve intergovernmental agreement. Between Harney County and Oregon Justice Department, contract number two, six, zero, zero, four, one. Uh, in the matter of, or the, uh. Harney County Courthouse, the courthouse and the courthouse annex, annex, which we officially renamed the, the sheriff's office and those facilities over there as the annex. Are owned by county and partially occupied by county and Harney County Certain Court. The court, both parties are interested in improving and renovating the annex located at four eighty-five North Court Avenue, Burns, Oregon. Project or annexed. To benefit court staff, judges, county staff and members of the public. Uh, the parties agreed to, and then specifications, and it's all part of the packages in the agenda packet. Okay, so I'm not gonna read the whole thing, obviously verbatim, has a lot of your usual language. Contract language, I G A contract language, so, um. Specifically on, on transferring the three million dollars to Harney County. And then the requirements for the use and authoriz-, authorized uses for those funds. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
I saved this until after we voted on that. Do, do we need to set up a fund as you indicated prior, like, right now to? We just have one spot to sign?
Yeah.
Do we need to set that fund up now?
Um, I didn't work with the, with the treasurer on that, um. We discussed it the other day, and maybe by next court time we'll have a resolution to establish a fund for it.
We don't expect to get that money prior to then, brother.
Even if we do, there's places we could dock it, and then. Is a date supposed to be associated with our signing? It looks like just a date by O J D legal review. Cause then, um, there's not a date box, let's just put a date next to it. And what is it, fifteen? Just to cover it. All right, that business being taken care of. And next topic is in the. In the matter of, um. Creating Charter Communications Tax Fund. So petition or a, uh. Who is this?
That is the, uh, employee wellness suggestion.
Oh, oh, okay, that was next topic, okay. Is the treasurer available? She could, uh, explain this better, but basically, um. Charter Communications has appealed their. Their tax assessment. And until it's resolved, we have to hold those funds in an account, uh, cause if they're due a refund. Then that's where the refund would come from.
Why, why is this constant with the utilities?
So utilities are, are assessed not by the county but by the state. But then when they appeal the assessment that the state is conducted, has set. We're the ones that are left holding administratively, holding on to things, and having to provide. She's out, okay. Um, it's, the same thing happened in Lakeview on their, what was it, their power line and a gas line or something last year? That, um, and, and we, I think we have one right now that we're already holding on to, waiting on a decision for, so. We're just in the, stuck in the middle on.
Is that under the purview of the public utilities permission? Do you think?
No, I think it's the Department of Treasurer. Department of Revenue. I don't know, um, how about Assessor Hill? See if she's available, she might be able to answer some of these questions better than I, so I won't mess it up.
I absolutely understand that we need to do that. I remember the school district having to refund. Some money because of one of these settlements and a utility argued. And won, if they were overvalued, I just don't understand why it's all the time.
Um, I think, you know, like any business, it's about their bottom line, so if they. They feel they're being overtaxed and. They wanna have to pay it out. Okay, well, I'm sorry, I don't have maybe specific questions to answer, but in, in general, that's what the purpose of this is for.
I don't have any misgivings about setting up a fund for that.
And it would be nice to have the, have the discussion just for public knowledge and, and then, you know, whatever, so people would understand why. Why we're doing it, what the process is and everything, so, um, but having, having said that. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-two in the matter of creating Charter Communications Tax Fund number six, four, five for potential refund credit. And then as we've discussed, um. Little bit of the whys. A motion? Or any further discussion? A motion?
I move to approve resolution twenty, twenty-five, twenty-two in the matter of creating Charter Communications Tax Fund number six, four, five for potential refund credit.
I second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-two in the matter of creating Charter Communications Tax Fund number six, four, five. For potential refund credit, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? And opposed? And hearing none, motion carries. Next topic is the employment, employee wellness such, uh, suggestions. We have a box in the break room that receives. Suggested topics, um. For employee relations and whatever, whatever suggestions or comments people wanna leave. Um, recently we received a, a suggestion that has kind of a three-part suggestion. The first was length of service, the money we get monthly when we have been here for certain lengths of time. Save all the pay for their anniversary day. Or. Our closest payday. Um. Employees are, instead of, I guess, right now, the way the process of that is done is, is it's. And I don't know the exact calculation, but after five years. It's after five years, I believe, it's, it's, uh, X amount of dollars and then five dollars. Every year thereafter, monthly. So like a person might. Need to go grab that policy manual, but just round numbers, let's just say that after five years you get fifty dollars a month. And then every year after it goes up by five dollars, so every month you'd get fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five, et cetera. So I believe what somebody's asking here is instead of getting that in a monthly payment. To hold on to it and pay it in one lump sum annually. That would, I, I, I would say before we would take action or do anything along those lines, there's a couple of things to consider is the number one, we need to ask the rank and file. If that would be something that they would wanna do, or if it would be, um, to, you know, to continue with the monthly. Uh, in the paycheck monthly, or hold it and maybe pay it out. Um, to, you know, to continue with the monthly, uh, in the paycheck monthly, or hold it and maybe pay it out. In. June or. In November before Christmas or something like that, I don't, I don't know, but that is gonna need some more. Some more clarification and. Uh, versus just one suggestion in a box going with that, we need to talk with the rank and file and decide what they would like to do. Um, employees, next talk, next suggestion, uh, I think it was on the same slip of paper. Um, employees are able to cash in unused vacation hours right before Christmas. Um. Currently, they're not able to do that, and so I guess they're requesting to be able to do that.
Currently, what? What are they allowed to do?
Um, currently, there's a threshold on the amount of hours you can accrue and ho- and hold. Um, in vacation, anything over that amount gets paid out as it's earned. So if it is off the, if the maximum amount is sixty hours of vacation, just round number, and, and you. Have vacation or overtime. You see employees who cash out unused vacation, so you accrue vacation monthly, but anything over that. Uh, there is no accrual, I take that back, I was thinking of overtime, so once you hit your maximum carryover amount, you stop accruing.
Right.
So, so the person either has to use. Or we would pay it out, which would take them below. The, the maximum carryover amount, and then they would start to accrue again. But, but until they use it or we have a policy to pay some of it out annually. Um, then they don't accrue anymore until after. After it's brought below the maximum.
But upon termination of employment, it's the amount they have is paid out.
Yes.
So we do carry that liability, and we probably account for that liability for all of our employees.
Yeah, it is, it is a. Um. Yeah, a debt or a whatever. That we would have to pay out.
Currently, if you meet that threshold. You are not notified that it's no longer accruing, you just don't accrue it. Just. Just say no, it's out.
There's no payout.
There, there's no payout. There's no notification, there's no payout, you just stop.
Yeah, but there would, there would be.
Doesn't come back if you get below. You just lose it, so you lose that benefit altogether.
Well, once, so again, once, say, once you're at sixty hours, if that was the max, if that was your carryover maximum. Once you get to that, you stop accruing, if you use twenty hours, puts you back to forty, then you would start accruing again until you get sixty.
Right.
But there's no payout, there's no, no policy for payout. Um. Once a person hits that amount. So, so yeah, if we decided to go with, with a, with an option to pay somebody out, once they hit that threshold. Then, then we would have to notify because. Obviously, that's gonna be a decision, do I stick at sixty hours? Or do I get paid out twenty hours and then start accruing?
Can we afford it?
Um. I don't know on that part of it, because obviously it would, it would. I mean, if the person uses the twenty hours and takes the time and for what it was intended for.
They want the cash.
Then they're gonna accrue, well.
It would need to be studied, okay?
A little, a little bit, because it would, if everybody started cashing out, then yes, that would be, that would be a financial burden that. That we would have to consider.
Maybe, maybe get more. Have it lined out more so people under, we and others could understand what we're talking about.
We would have to do a dramatic overhaul. And do some policy work, I think, because as it stands right now. The maximum amount. That we would have to pay out is around three hundred hours, if someone had. Their maximum carryover and had accrued eighty hours in that year, and then. They moved on to greener pastures, they could cash out three hundred hours. If we paid them out a certain amount every year, then. Our expense would be much greater, could potentially be much greater, and I'm not necessarily in favor of that, but if we could think of a policy. Where the state has a policy, for example, that people can cash out up to forty hours. Once they reach a certain threshold, but they have to leave sixty hours in there. If we could do an accounting so that our. Total expenditures over their career wouldn't be any greater, so. By changing the policy, wouldn't allow them to accrue more leave or be paid for more leave, but if they had the option.
Normally would if they used it.
Yeah, so, so i- if they could pull some of that out, and it probably doesn't necessarily have to be at Christmas time, although I do like the sentiment of that. But I don't think we're in a position to incur. Potentially significantly more cost if we just elect, because I would just keep an eye on my vacation hours, and if I was getting close to going over. I'd just cash those out and always roll over the maximum amount and cash out, it could be a significant amount of money.
Yeah. Whereas if a person takes it and leave, actually takes it and leave, that's calculated into their salary line. This would be in addition to what their salary is.
Is this something that we could potentially put to the department head meeting and see if there's interest in pursuing that? Because as I said, if we could make a policy where it wouldn't be an additional expense for the county. But would be a benefit that people could access prior to retirement or termination, then. Financially, it would be a wash, and it might empower some of our employees, I'd be okay with that if there's interest from the staff.
So definitely, I would say that's the next step, we would take it to a staff meeting, department head meeting and see what more. You know, I put it out there ahead of time so they can get feelers from their staff and then discuss it in a department head meeting. Um, and, and have to look and consider what the financial. Impact would be. Um, to the budget. So we can do that, I can send that out, I'll send all three of these out to department heads and have them survey their people and see what they think about it, and bring them back to the department head meeting. Um. And, and, and right now is really a good time to narrow these kind of topics down, because we are in the process of redoing the, uh, employee handbook. Which has all of this, these elements in it, and if we're gonna change or add any. Procedures to it, now's the time to do it while it's in review. Um, it's on my desk, I've read through, reviewed my final review about halfway through, just trying to find time to get into it. And then I'm gonna send it to, to both of you for review, and then, um. Once the court has looked at it. For policy-wise and everything, and it's, and it's the. More or less the final draft. Then I'm gonna send it to department heads to get their input on it as well, and then we'll come back and ratify it at some point.
At what point is like C I S? Over, over review things? It, or, or, or what other, whatever H R. Advisory, uh, resource we have for our policies.
So i- in, in reality, really, this version that we're using. Is a C I S, a recommended version, so, yeah, because they have to ensure anything, any H R policies that we. Established, so, so there might be some few parts that we tweaked in something like this or something, but for the most part. Uh, liability wise, it's their recommended version. Um, anyway, so the last one is increased payday to twice a month. Uh, many staff has, staff have voiced difficulty getting through the month on only one pay. One payday, the standard is bi-monthly. Um, it depends, you know, like all s- uh, state agencies are, are monthly. Um, I know they're talking about going bi-monthly, but, but my. Person I know specifically is, gets paid once a month from the state. Uh, federal government is, is twice a month. So. Um, you know, private industry, I'm gonna say it varies from business to business, so. Um, I will say that, that converting to a twice monthly process. Uh, H R right now already spends two to three days. A pay period. On, on payroll, and if we go to twice monthly, that's. Another two to three days of, you know, that adds to the workload.
I remember the first time. I was employed somewhere and they, they were my first experience just paying once a month, it was. It was, you know, kind of a culture, culture shift and, and, uh. And they were a very large company and they. Said it just saves a lot of money and time and effort on their part to pay it out once a month, it was an efficiency. You know, yes, people who. Have to manage their, their paycheck, you know, sometimes find. A whole month is, it's a lot harder than two weeks, um. But it was, that was back in nineteen ninety-one, when, when our, I still remember it because it was a significant change, um, and. Many places I've worked since, or have been monthly since then, so I didn't know if that was for the same reason for efficiencies and, and time and effort. Of doing payroll is a certain process that you gotta do anytime you run a payroll. So. They were just trying to make it easier for the company, but, um. I don't know, I mean, it would be, we need to get some input on, on all these different things that are affected.
In order to shorten. In order to shorten the time that it takes to prepare a payroll run. Uh, we might have to look at. Um, upgrading our software, and I, I have a hard time in this day and age with computers and A I and everything else. Um. The, the why is it so labor intensive to do our payroll? That, that if employee X gets. A certain incentive pay, whether it's longevity or in our bargaining unit, something that's been, you know. That's plugged into that individual's payroll file and it, it calculates and does it automatically, so I don't know why. Our system that we have with Tyler. Is, makes things so labor intensive, but so it might be if we're gonna do something, this would, we would definitely probably wanna look into. At, um. Uh. Computer software. Version or modifications or something to help.
As far as you know, and you might not know, um. What other organizations in Harney County use Tyler?
Uh, nobody in Harney County uses Tyler, except for the county that I'm aware of, I don't believe the cities do.
It might be that the Tyler payroll. You know, package is not the greatest, I don't know.
I, I would be, this is another one, I'd be curious to hear input from the department heads meeting. See if it's worth pursuing, and if it is, it could be a catalyst, like we said, to explore other software. Possibilities that. Maybe even if we did decide to go to twice a month, we'd have a lower overall workload because better technology use.
Part of the. Part of the concern I can say too is, is the interface between, between our, um. Our payroll. And the budget. Because, because the salary, the budget as, as monthly, monthly payroll checks are cut. That then crosses back over to the budget side of Tyler to de- to reduce those lines as the money's being spent. But, but that doesn't mean that Tyler couldn't take their, our payroll system and upgrade it, or maybe, you know, I don't believe they have a. A newer version of it, but, you know.
I mean, I just, I mean Tyler might be great, I don't know, they might be. They might not be great, that's what we've had for a long time and change is hard and it costs money to change. But I just, I have no concept of. Whether they're that great or not.
Yeah. Um.
I, I.
Two things with the data.
You would think that just, that these things can be set up so easy so that. It automatically happened, I mean, I don't understand.
Two things with the database, the information's only as good as what's in, input into it. And then the output on it is only as good as what you tell it, you want it to come out, you know, to do with that data, so. Um, I have. Some reservations on some of the uses that we have Tyler for. Uh, it's expensive and the other applications are expensive. You know, if the county was to look at, we just upgraded from, from a server-based version to a cloud-based version. Which will allow us to, uh, create more user accounts within departments. And department heads will be able to run their own reports on a monthly basis and per, and, and review where their. Where their budgeted line items are at, and how much has been spent, so there are some, some, and at budget time and budget, um. At the budget cycle time, it'll allow them to look at their current to year numbers and develop their budgets. So that'll be good. But. Uh, getting certain reports out, like I asked them. On our current version nine, I asked them if they had A I integration into it to be able to run analysis reports, and they don't with this. With our current, with our version nine, they have version ten that's out as well, and it's, it's got quite a bit more user. Ability for the user to, um, to create your own reports. But again, it's another expense to.
I know.
Twenty thousand dollars or so to upgrade to.
When you have such a tight budget, it's really hard to make improvements that need to be made.
You, you know, I know people get tired of hearing budget, 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 we don't have it for this, and it's gonna cost money, and where do we get it from? But it hamstrings us in so many different ways.
It, it really does, that's why. I do sound like I bring it up a lot, is it has affected uh, everything. And still does. For the county. And our ability to, to do good things.
So with this alone, though, I will schedule a department head meeting. Um, send these points out ahead of time. Ask them to, to, um. Survey their staff, see what their staff thinks about it, and we'll come back and discuss it at a staff meeting.
And also if you'd share it with H R.
Yes. I think she's already got this, hasn't she?
I don't know.
I don't know, she, I'll make sure she does, but.
I do appreciate people putting suggestions in the suggestion box and not just cheering up guns. I don't know if that's really happening.
So, alright. Um. That's it for new business. Um. Takes us to correspondence? Any correspondence of note?
I did have some correspondence, and I didn't send it in to have it put in the packet, but if you guys. Want copies of it to go in the packet, you may, but I think it's worth putting on your radar. It was brought to my attention that Water Watch, which is a special interest group that deals in water issues in Oregon, sent on a call to action. Prior to the closing of public comment. For the O W R D rulemaking and petition process. And in this call to action. I felt like they painted a very misleading picture, and they basically said an alfalfa farmer in Harney County. Has pushed forth a petition that would allow for significantly more groundwater pumping. And they didn't name any of the other petitioners, I felt like it was. Disingenuous and misleading, so I contacted Water Watch and told them such. And their, their staff attorney reached out to me and asked. Said they'd be happy to respond. But they needed to know if I or the court was represented by a lawyer on the subject, and after confirming with our legal counsel. I replied to them and said, I'd be happy to read anything they send, but there doesn't need to be a back and forth, I just wanted to. Directly recognize that I think what they did was. Misleading. So that's the response, if you want that stuff in the packet, I can send it in.
Um, I'm good, so you and county council are on top of it, I'm fine with it. Um, any developments that come of it? Just updates is fine. With me.
Yeah. That's it, I was just, I was a little bit twitchy after having a conversation with someone who has. Has been involved with wild horse. Issues in the West for probably thirty years, and they said every time there is any publicity or bad publicity. The special interest groups use it as a fundraising catalyst. And so when I read that call to action, I just thought that, that is not. Representing what's really going on, and I feel like you're just trying to get your membership riled up, and I didn't like it. There'll also be. An op ed in Capital Press and possibly in some of the other publications regarding.
From you?
You.
Oh, I was gonna say from their position or from us or from?
From us, and I debated, because I really didn't want to engage in a back and forth, but the op ed is, it's really just. Kind of laying out the history of the water issues in Harney County, trying to be a little bit more objective. And, and talking about that we do have all of the local governments. And the tribe, the cities, the county, tribe, and local landowners. As petitioners, and we are working towards community solutions for this and look forward to working with the state collaboratively, so.
So it's gonna be in Capital Press and it's gonna be on the Berthold Times Herald as well?
No, I didn't send them, Capital Press said they'd run it, I don't, I don't know that they have or will. And didn't hear about it from the Oregonian or the Observer.
I appreciate it, I'd like to read it. So, but, but you know, you don't know when, or. Um, Capital Press.
I don't.
And will others subscribe?
Nor do I.
Any other correspondence to know? Uh, meeting schedule. Meeting. Yeah, meeting schedule, any meetings of, I've, I've kind of mentioned a couple of mine that I have, just small individual meetings with regional solutions and. And the. Jail design team.
If you want me to put, um, any of the schools on.
If you want me to put um, any of the schools on November two, like the ones that have a board meeting on the second Tuesday or second Monday of November?
So we, we're, the county court will be that week of November seventeenth to the. Twenty first is AOC conference, so that's out for us. I know that didn't sound like what you were talking about, but. And then the next week is Thanksgiving, so. It'd have to be earlier in November.
The second Tuesday is too late?
I don't, I mean, if you set something up, I'll, I'll move whenever I have to move to come because. We discussed, not gonna find a perfect date.
I think we discussed that last time, that, that week being county court week. What did we decide to do with county court?
We didn't. I have it on for general deliberations. I didn't know if we uh. We can do it right now.
So we wanna push it to the following week?
It's, it's whatever we decide is better to do.
Oh, yeah, November.
Well, the second Tuesday is November eleventh, so I would work for.
That's fine, but Veterans Day, I don't know if that affects. Holly, that's Veterans Day.
Yes, ma'am, that's what I said, yeah.
So, so we have the fifth, the twelfth, the nineteenth and the twenty sixth. We do them two weeks, you know, two weeks back to back. Or we skip the third week and do the fourth week, if we're gonna keep it on a, on a Wednesday.
Well. A lot of times we don't keep it on a Wednesday, um, till the November. Just because.
Either regardless, it's either gonna be two weeks back to back, or we skip a week and do it the fourth week.
The CCP meeting is on the twelfth. So I would be, I would prefer not doing them back to back.
How about a Monday or Tuesday, November twenty fourth and twenty fifth, because you're getting into the Thanksgiving holiday. If you have it on Wednesday.
I don't have anything on either day.
I'm open.
As mine.
Wasn't it twenty fourth? Normal time, November twenty fourth? Change that on the calendar and whatnot?
Nine thirty starting?
Yep, and nine o'clock, eight, counts payable and nine thirty court. Other than that, um, regular session on November fifth. At our new time. Nine o'clock for accounts payable, nine thirty regular session. And then moving into December, that's a month, over a month out, so we'll get to that. Any other meetings then of, of note?
Well, that strategic doing training, are you still gonna go to that?
I'm not gonna go. I, I don't have the time to get out for three days.
It's hard to, hard to out, but I'm gonna go to that. That's here at the tribe.
I'd like to, but.
Um, and I'll bring it back, any thing I learned uh, to share with you from that. That's the twentieth, twenty first and twenty second.
I'm glad you're attending that.
Part of, I, I was, wanted to and then I didn't want to and I was like, no, let's, let's go, let's do it.
Um, as I mentioned, it looks like the next meeting with the jail program is on the, or the design build is on the twenty second of October. With the sheriff and the design team of the contractors.
There's a O-Tech luncheon on the twentieth, or basically there's having hot dogs. I don't understand why they are so gung ho on getting government officials to come to their stuff, but they sure are. So that's from eleven to one on the twentieth. And on the twenty sixth is the four H awards banquet out at the Red Barn, I believe at five thirty PM on Sunday the twenty sixth.
I have on the twenty seventh, the afternoon of the twenty seventh, I'll travel to Salem. For the area commission on transportation. Uh. Joint session meeting. Um, on the twenty eighth, from ten to three, I think it is, twenty, ten to two thirty. If there's any, I mean, we all have concerns about maintenance. I mean, at a minimum, our maintenance of roads during the winter time, snow removal. Um, and we always express interest or can, or desire for passing lanes. On highway twenty. Um, and those, you know, keeping our rest areas open, those, those concerns. I think all that's gonna be funded though with this bill. And then, I mean, maybe this is the time to go into the referendum, um, but uh. Thirty days after this, after the Senate passed it, then the governor has to sign it. And I believe there's already some movement underway for a referendum. If you have anything then.
Monday night, um. There was a organizational conference call. There was three hundred and ninety-four people along the call. Um, so this is gonna be a statewide effort, obviously. Um, okay, so October second was uh, day one of the process that you were talking about. Where. The referendum process can't start for ninety days after that. And within that time period, there's also the governor has to sign the bill before we can start collecting signatures. I did volunteer to collect signatures, okay, um, on a personal basis. Uh, and so. Uh, the governor will likely sign it by November twelfth. She'll probably pull it out as long as she can. And, cause she's already come out with statements opposing any type of things going to the voter regarding this. Uh, likely date, the secretary state would uh, turn around and authorize uh, a petition process. Would be November fourteenth and November fifteenth would be the most likely date for the sign gathering to start. Uh, what they're hoping for is a hundred thousand signatures in thirty days. They need seventy-eight thousand signatures. Um. So the final day, the last day to mail in, um, petitions would be December twentieth and December thirtieth would be the final day to file signatures. So we're definitely gonna be in um, the uh, holiday season. Which will mean holiday bizarre setups and all of that. Uh, there's a lady from Post that is the grassroots director. There will be, um, of those three hundred and ninety-four people, there will be, um. Captains uh, designated from each county to uh. Overseen volunteers within that county. It's a, they, they've got a very elaborate process set up for this. It is uh, set up on no tax Oregon, it will be no tax org dot com. Uh, where people can volunteer and there's a number of questions they ask at what stage you wanna, uh, volunteering. Whether you wanna be just a signature collector or be a captain or uh, do other things like that. Okay, let me get out of the specifics though. Uh, this is being, um. Uh, produced by a representative Edward Deal. And uh, also Bruce Starr, who's a senator and he's the minority leader, leader of the, uh, senate. Um, other organizations and the main one involved is Oregon Freedom Coalition. And uh. I'm not gonna put out so many uh, email addresses because they get confusing. Um, and there's also a group called Oregon Watchdog or Oregon Taxpayers Association that's involved in this with Jason. Okay, um, it's these, this referendum is not going to. Uh, apply to the whole bill. It will only be ta- dealing with four elements and that is the gas tax increase. The payroll transit tax increase, the title fees and the registration fees. Uh, I have a write-up on this that I'll send to Holly, so uh, you know, they can have, they can read. Okay, so under the captains will be the volunteers. Uh, let me see, so coordinating and. Reporting and everything will work through that process. Um. I don't think we need to go into. How detailed it is, but it is detailed. They are very well organized, I think, for where we're at now. Um, so. There will be single sys- uh, single signature petitions online. For those people who are in the very rural world or is it have a hard time getting into town and finding a petition that they can sign. And then the other petitions will be ten line signatures. Um. And, and those will go through the volunteers and the captains. Um, the, the ten line petitions will not be in the down table. Uh, so one of the questions that came up was uh, what happens if this goes through? It's, it's given to the voters and the voters reject the ODOT um, bill three nine nine one. Um. The, the position of, I have to say the Republicans, because they're the main ones that are organizing against this. Um, is that there is money within the ODOT department. It's just so tied up. With different allocations that were done when the funding was approved. And so it's not being spent on what is uh, safe and well-maintained roads, which, you know. They feel is a priority and I think most of us feel is a priority. So what um. Would have to happen if the voters uh, agree with this petition or referendum. Would be that uh, the legislature would have to meet again. And they would have to release those barriers. That are, that control how ODOT spends the money, because evidently they've got plenty of money within the ODOT budget. If they were just allowed to spend it on the priorities rather than surplus was. Uh, example of the DEI programs that. Um. You know, some might call absurd. Anyway, um. I mean, I, I personally have a question about scholarships for Alaska natives.
So for, for the act meeting. This information you're providing us, is this related to what Judge Hart's? When he hosted his meeting, or is this just for our general information?
This is for your general information. I don't believe any of the information on this organizational, um. Conference call that they had, um, is really on the agenda for the state ODOT meeting that. He's talking about, maybe.
So yeah, the, the referendum is not gonna play probably a big part in this, in this act meeting. Um, but like the last C Act meeting we had, it was predominantly report on what would happen if. If the Senate chose option A, B, or C and how, you know, what, how that would affect their staffing levels and through the winter and whatnot. And then they passed it, so everything that we discussed in that, really that we discussed in that session, the C Act meeting session was irrelevant. Because the, the, the bill was passed, um. I, I guess my, my only question, if you know, is that if, if the voters approve it. You know, it gets a yes, a vote and, and the, and the, um, three nine, three nine one one, is that what it was?
Three nine nine one.
Is, is overturned.
Well, it wouldn't be overturned, it'd be modified. Because it, this referendum would not be um, addressing all of the issues with.
So those, but those portions of it that it does address, then do they call another special session and come back and just. Repass another like bill or. Or, or does it force them to do these other things that you talked about as un- unbinding some of these other funds? Does it? Will the bill, or will the referendum itself force them to do that? Or they just come back in and come up with a different tax?
Well, uh, I guess they might do that. I don't know. I, I don't have an answer.
Um, I don't know if this will fit into act, but. And I know if people choose not to obey signs, they choose not to obey signs, but I'm thinking with ODOT's. Challenges so that, all right, they're getting funding, does that mean we're gonna have the same level of service we've generally had? Or not, or whatever, but is signage, signage is one of the, uh, I, I would expect less expensive. Tools of ODOT and, but usually they have quite a process before signs are approved to be used. You know, on, on state roads and, and for different purposes, but if. If ODOT is not able to keep up its safety and maintenance of roads and things as appropriate. Due to the management of, or the funding of their department, uh, can they? Can they make the process for counties, for local areas who say a couple of signs here and there will help? Now that this area is becoming, you know, less well-maintained or this or that. I mean, it, it sounds like nothing, but yet that has been so bureaucracy, bureaucratized, just even putting up signs that I just wonder if. That should be, might come up in a discussion at all.
I think their general, their general position on signage is that it's expensive. I mean, and that's, I mean, not just saying that's what they come back with.
It's, but it, it lasts a long time and you don't have to maintain it.
Well, no, that's the expensive part of it is the replacement on them.
Well.
You can ask.
If it's a safety, if it, you know, if, if they're not gonna be able to maintain things even as much as they used to. Then there need to be some other warning signs and things, you know, to get people's attention for their own safety and driving.
Well, their, their bill that they passed was full funded.
Yeah, I know.
Um, it wasn't, you know, at current labor or current staffing rates or whatever, it was full funding to be able to hire. Fill all those positions and everything, so.
Did all the, all the billion dollars, did it go, did any projects get fixed of those big projects that weren't really. Road so much as metro area. Things.
Well, I think in their bill, all those projects, all those projects are funded. This was mostly just on operations was what this exist, uh, these additional taxes and. And vehicle title fees and everything else are all just to go towards operations and maintenance. Everything else was funded through other pots of money.
I think the problem is, and, and this goes back years of going to C Act meetings. Is I remember a meeting when Judge Grassdale was still here where ODOT was admitting. They always went over budget. They never had a problem with that because they could go to DC and fill that gap. And now they can't do that, so that's where they hurt. And uh, I just think there's so much bloat in ODOT that it's just ridiculous and they should think about. If they're gonna fill positions, they fill positions they need rather and get rid of some of the bloat and the dead wood that they bought, I mean.
I, you know, during my time as the co-chair of the, of the C Act. And they've asked me to present a one slide or two slide presentation. I mean, I could go into that rant that, that, you know, this is. Um, through the additional fuel costs and title and registration costs and everything, but yet we get no. Really, there is no increased or, or. Uh, increased uh, accountability on ODOT's part. None of that passed, none of that, none of that portion was considered as far as. Looking at the bloat and, and how, how dollars are used and, and appropriated for ODOT and their projects.
I would say that it's not just an Oregon problem, this is a national problem with the different transportation departments.
So if though, with that in mind on the C Act or the Act meeting, if you have anything. Um, I think I sent that, that email out to both of you too, oh, with that slide and if there's anything that you wanted to add or have, have mentioned or. Whatever, please let me know. Um. Brings us to general deliberation. I, I've got one thing, because I think I've talked about most everything else I would talk about, but I have one issue I wanna bring up. And then. Um, well, what do we wanna do? We wanna recess for noon and come back for our. How much more do we have on our general session?
General deliberations today, and I know we have other things we're trying to cover and you got a three fifteen hard stop.
Um, so.
I mean, I'll cover my.
What are we gonna do with, with our work session then? Because it's a separate session, not, not regular session. Are we gonna come back, finish county court and then move into a work session? So what you wanna do? Alright, so county court will stand adjourned, or um, in recess until, until one fifteen.
Recession used to be more fun.
Recession used to be more fun than. Yeah, one o'clock. It'll back at five. And now I'm wondering, because of these day and night towing, how that's in work, but.
Alright, good afternoon, everybody. It is one sixteen, we are, alright, county court's back in session. Uh, we're down to the last regular session item, in general deliberation. Um, one item I wanted to mention, most like I said, what I've, what I've already talked about with the jail, the. The flooding and all that kinda stuff, is all, I've already briefed, so the only other topic that I have that I wanna brief real quick, like is. Um, in, in January twenty twenty-three. Oregon enacted their Oregon paid leave program and directed counties to withhold, uh, payroll deduction or withholdings. Program payments for that from all employees. They didn't specify any difference between elected officials and non-elected officials, uh, but that encompasses all. All employers in the state of Oregon, not just public employees. Um, and. So from the research, first off, we didn't, we didn't know about. Let me back up. In September of that same year in twenty-three, they, they. They created a policy that elected officials didn't have to contribute to it. We didn't know about that decision or that policy until July of this year. Um, elected official made inquiry about, you know, why are we having this withheld from our paychecks if we're gonna get paid? Whether we're out ill or, or absent or what, regardless, we're not really eligible for paid leave Oregon, because we're still gonna get paid. So there shouldn't be any reason for us as elected employees or elected officials to have those withholdings. So, um, our HR started to look into it, and as she called other counties, other counties were. Oh, yeah, we didn't know that either, so, so the state failed to relay that message to the counties. And to let them know that, or let us know that we didn't have to withhold those anymore. Having said that, um, HR has gone back and redone the, the quarterly reports on salary and, and. You know, all of our mandatory reporting requirements on, on salary and withholdings and everything since. Would have been, uh, third quarter of, of twenty-three. Um, amended all those, took, taking those payments out. And, and then requesting a, a refund from OP, from Oregon paid leave. It was, it's moving along, but things don't move along that fast with state, any other state or federal government, or even. Even ourselves, I mean, you know, in order for us to do some things in a timely manner is done. With restrictions that are on us, so, um. So after July of this year, that, that, that work was done. A, a refund has, it indicates a refund on our account of nine thousand dollars and some change. Um, and the part of that goes to the employees, and a part of that comes back to the employer, because there's an employer contribution por- portion to that as well. Um, our calculations from Jo- from January one of twenty twenty-three to. July, when we stopped doing the withholdings, is eleven thousand dollars and some change, so we're not quite sure where the, where the two thousand dollar disparity is. I have a suspicion that, and we haven't been able to get in touch with anybody, the. The Oregon paid leave program, and I requested some contact information today from Regional Solutions Courtney Crowell on. Who do I contact on this? Cause we're not getting good assistance from it. But my assumption is gonna be, or at least right now at the moment, is that. They're only saying that we can get a refund from that September time when the policy was made that elected officials don't have to contribute anymore. So we're only gonna get a refund from that September to current day, uh, or till July when we stop doing the withholdings. And that may be where that other two thousand dollars is. My intent this week, until I found that out, my intent this week was to cut checks for all, for all elected officials. And, and a few that, that are no longer with us, uh, three elected officials that are no longer with us. No longer elected officials, there's no. There, um, anyway, um. My intent was to have checks cut this week and get them out to everybody, but now seeing that disparity in between what we show and what they show. I'm reluctant to cut those checks until I find out for sure what the amount is owed back to each elected official. Um, you know. Beyond that, I mean, we could work with the eleven thousand dollar number. But if they're only gonna refund us nine thousand, then we're gonna be short two thousand that we have to make up somewhere. It has to be done through accounts payable, because it's, it's post-tax funds, they, it won't be payroll, it'll be a, an, uh, a, uh. AP check. Um, and in order to do that, we don't really have a line or whatever to take that out of, what was planning on using is the, the treasurer's revolving fund. To take that money out of that to write those checks, and then when we got our refund, it would replenish that, because the, the treasurer's revolving fund has to stay. Zeroed, it has to be, what comes in goes out, what goes out has to have something to come in to match it. So, um. I, I got an email back, and obviously wasn't able to check emails during previous, or earlier session, but I did get an email back from. Regional Solutions saying, hmm, good question, I'll get back to you. So I'm waiting on that contact information, but it's my intent before the week is out to get to the bottom of it now. And then we'll either run them through the invoices through regular AP process, which is, um, that'll be due by this Friday, I think. So we have the invoices in by Friday, and then the checks will be cut next week.
I like that idea of we're taking care of that as soon as we can, thanks for that.
Yep.
So, um, it, it's been a work in progress. We're working on it. So I wanted to put that out there for, for, you know, and. And I'm, I'm working up a memo, an internal memo to send out to the other elected officials, let them know where we're at with it. But, I hope you haven't finalized shortly.
Appreciate that update.
That's all I have. Like I said, most everything else that I would have briefed on would have been, um, what we've already talked about today. Commissioner Dorf?
Got a couple things, one is. Biggest thing is the CFAA, the, the county's financial assistance agreement. From the state, OHA, to the counties regarding behavioral health contract. Um, as you know, um, the state changed it around this time, this has been a contract that. The counties have had with the state, they do every other year, I think, and ours, of course, uh, is. Symmetry Care is our provider, um, they changed language, they, they moved things around and they made it. Unpalatable to counties, because, um, to where all thirty-six counties in Oregon. From Portland and Multnomah County to Harney County, all thirty-six are strongly united. In not signing that contract, lawyers are involved, some, but there's some counties that have, um. Have been working on this, they've done red line versions. Of what. Would be acceptable, and those type of negotiations, it sounds like the state is digging in deep and is not planning to. Negotiate much, so I attended Monday's AOC Health and Human Services Steering Committee, which. There was quite a bit of, uh, dialogue on it, um, they record those meetings, and last night I tried to. See if the recording was something I could easily access, I had to download it, and then it, it didn't work out too good, I'll work with Holly to where. I can find out exactly where it is, you ought to listen to that meeting, and you can hear it from, one of them is the Marion County Attorney. Um, there's another gentleman, I wasn't sure who he was, I don't know if he's a commissioner or not, um. Very good comments that, uh, better than I can share with you, but. The, um, thoughts are that it all stems from years of mismanagement of the state mental hospital. And the people on those commissions and boards that oversee that, never making our decisions, legislators not making our decisions, good decisions. They're pushing, you know, very seriously mental ill people down to stay in the communities, they're. They're, um, trying to put the burden of this type of stuff that is more than, more than counties can do onto us. And in some ways also, you know, they're just financially in the process, but what it, the, the end result is that. Their kind of contract takes away local decision-making, takes away the ability to do the work that symmetry care largely does, which is. Treatment and prevention work and, and, uh, you know. Treating people in the community who can, who can receive services and, and have it work well. Multiply that by the other thirty-five and, and what theirs all look like, to have not even one county. Uh, say, no, it's not a big deal, or supporting the state is very unusual, very unusual, so. I, again, what I would like to do for you, um. And I'll play it again myself, is I want to go ahead and get it where you can just listen to the. The portions that are worth listening to, then we're all here the same things, um. There's no steering committee meetings next month, next month is our annual conference. And the extended contract that we signed goes through the end of December, so there, a lot more is probably gonna happen, but. Uh, I was really sad to, to see that it's actually gotten worse than when we. Last heard it, and, um, I wanna, I wanna provide the tools for you to get up to speed. Commissioner Bethel of Marion County, Danielle, um, she said. That she's one of the counties, uh, that has an attorney on it and is, is providing a lot of leadership, and. She recommends if, if, if the county commissioners, county court members haven't. Looked at it lately, make sure you look at what your county mental health. Plan is, your, uh, county public health plan is, and, um. She said that these roads show, you may have seen some, um, announcements of some ADPC. Trips, I think the closest one to us is Ontario, and I don't know if it already happened or if it's about to happen, but it's Alcohol Drug Policy Council Strategic Plan. She said that you can find online, you. You need to look at these things and become somewhat familiar with them, because. They're not good, and they're not saying the same thing, and the counties are gonna be the ones to suffer, so. Homework for us, I'll try to find ways to make it more efficient, maybe assemble the right documents, and then if we. If we do end up needing a work session, or if we need to have a, a session, uh, uh, and I'll include Dominic, if you want me to. On, on the emails that I send to you, as I try to make them a little bit more, um, efficient for us to do. But that, that was the big thing, um.
I think the County Attorneys Association or group has been engaged in that, in those discussions, haven't they?
Probably, I, I, I get that impression, but I, I guess I can't officially answer that question, since I don't know for sure, but. A lot of, a lot of, uh, counties, their attorneys are on it, I know that, um. And. Alright, so we may, we may end up needing a work session for ourselves or not, I don't know, but I'll try to get you the tools so that over the next several weeks, you can. Look at those when you find a little bit of time to just, or if we wanna have our public health, um. Directors, if you will, or whatever, come in and just briefly share an overview of the plan, depends on what you want, but. Uh, I haven't looked into this stuff yet, since Monday, when all this got on my radar.
From June timeframe, when this, when this contract was first proposed, and before the extension was, was decided on. I know Symmetry Care was very concerned about allowing that to lapse. I don't really understand how, I, I mean, they even to the point where they were. Ready to sign the contract without us almost, and, um, I, they can't do it, I'm not, and I'm not gonna give them that, that authority to sign on our behalf. Myself, um. Um, so I think maybe if it's getting close to that, and it looks like there's gonna be another stalemate. That they definitely need to be brought into the, to the conversation, and we need to understand how that's gonna affect them. If that's funding that they're not going to get, or, or how that might affect them in the lapse there.
Yes, it's very unfortunate, uh, that it's got the tone it's got right now, let's see what we can do about it, um. Uh, something that I'm. Doing is I'm putting together some dates for me to hold some targeted facilitated discussions, if you will. Around our economic development. Topics, for, for lack of a better word, I did this back, my first year as a commissioner, it was very helpful, it got me up to speed. I shared it out with the county court, and then ultimately with our economic development coordinator, and once we, once we had one, we did not have one at that time. And it, it's, it's not like a town hall, it's not like a work session, it's like. Here are the topics that I'm gonna be doing, I'm grouping agriculture, industry, and employment together. Small business, Main Street, and tourism together, housing and infrastructure together, and then labor and workforce, and. As, and I will send, I will send you guys the email that I'm sending out with the dates, you're welcome to sit in on them if you want, we're gonna be in the courthouse. One of the days gotta be up here, and the others are gonna be downstairs. But it was just basically having the, for instance, for, um. Housing and infrastructure, you know, I would have the cities, the people that are developers, that are, that are doing stuff, are, are building official. Real estate agents, you know, we're gonna have the electric co-ops and stuff been around, and it's more or less. Something where I start, start off, and I say, this is what. I'm gonna read you this, these are my thoughts, or, and then I'm gonna ask you, what did I get wrong, and then we're gonna, and I'm gonna kinda shore it up, cause it'll, there's just two hour meetings. We're gonna, we're not gonna get deep into anything, but I will. I guarantee I'll learn a whole lot, because things have changed, you know, things change over the years, and other people didn't know this or that, and then pretty soon. There was some energy to it, it's just a series of, uh, me convening a few meetings, and you're welcome to come. It's good not to have them get too big, but they got really big by the end last year, cause this word of mouth got out, you know. Oh, there's some meetings, you know, and we had like thirty-five people downstairs for the last one, um, and people were very respectful. And they realized it, it wasn't just anyone's gonna have the floor and, and, uh, more or less monopolize the floor. Uh, you know, I, I was kinda like, allowed to facilitate things, keep them rolling, and then I wrote it all up and shared that information, it was. It was a very unifying thing and a very informative thing at the time, so I'll be sending you out an email. That information. And anything you would like to chat with me about on it, anytime is fine.
I don't feel like we have clear direction of where to go from here, and I think meetings like we suggest would help. Give us some direction, but the one thing I would ask, it's not too much, if, if there's a way you can figure out to record it, even if it's just audio. So that if people can attend.
Well, maybe, we're not, we're not gonna do, it's really, maybe I'll audio record it if you want, but, um, but. I'm gonna be writing the notes up afterward, after each session, while it's fresh in my mind, and, uh. That also helps me learn it for good, when I write it up myself, um, you know, just be taking some hand notes. If, if it's anything like it was years ago, um, there was, it was a good thing to do once in a great while. Um, I think that's, oh, and just. I know that you might be waiting till after the first of the year, Judge, but. Elected Official Compensation Board is something that we always have to start thinking about, and, um. I believe we have a budget board member who will be, whose term ends at the end of December, Terry Hellbush. So, we'll probably wanna get.
I was actually looking at convening the elected official compensation board. Um, earlier this year, then, then at the start time of the, of the budget committee process. Um, cause there's a couple of other things I think I might ask them to look into, as far as, as far as the, that process.
Yeah, earlier is actually better, but it's hard to recruit people for that one for some reason, um, that's all I have, thank you.
Oh. I think I may have informed the court, but. Several Eastern Oregon commissioners had a conversation with Chief of the Forest Service about a month ago. And he recognized the need for more local control and management of our lands. And when we expressed concern, because we don't have the resources to hire more physicians, he. He didn't allude to, he directly said, we need to figure out a way to funnel more resources to the counties, and so I've already been pushing on NACO. To put together these MOUs, gather the MOUs in Montana, there are counties that are already managing their own forests. But when we had this conversation the other night at the Natural Resource Advisory Committee meeting. We talked about the other places a natural resource liaison could be used with the refuge, with public lands, with private lands. We talked about potentially sharing the cost of that, because we can't afford to do it, but maybe talk to the tribe. And, and see if they'd be willing to partner, and some of the other federal agencies, and one of the. Enrak members suggested, rather than waiting for the feds to. Give us some MOUs or some templates, maybe we should put together a proposal to them. Something that they can share between the Forest Service and the BLM, and I think the whole intent. And I think the whole intent is for the county as an organization to not incur more costs, but to be able to provide more services to our people. So. If it is amenable, I think that is something in the next six months I'll have the N RAC look at, is putting together a proposal. For how we can fund a position like that with minimal to no cost out of the county's pocket to provide those services. So if you have any input on that.
I I definitely see the value in a natural resource. Advisory position or a natural resource um, specialist.
Yeah.
Whatever, to 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 really be able to dive into those topics and then and have, you know, a broader breadth of of knowledge about them. Uh, work collaboratively with our N RAC and us and and help uh. Manage what's right in our backyard better. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Wildlife services is a topic that we have talked about in the past, but as we. Approach, not approach, as we get closer to the end of the year, and we don't have a way to fund that, we had talked about potentially having some work sessions. And months ago, I talked with our local Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife representative who had some ideas and was gonna put together. Some facts and statistics that we could use, but. We kinda spent a couple of months not talking about that and I wanted to see if now would be an appropriate time to start thinking about a work session for that. And working with O D F W and the N RAC to put together some information for us.
Are you talking predator control? Okay, just wanna make sure.
Which was what thirteen thousand dollars this month I saw, I was somewhere, is that accurate?
Um. Yeah, to making up the difference, I think, I think that was the short, the shortfall between what we had in the um. In the Tailored Grazing Act Fund, um, that was the shortfall to make up the balance of what we needed. To to fund the whole program this year. Next year, we won't have anything. It'll be zero next year. Um, I know, I know this is a hot topic and it means a lot to those producers that have cattle on the ground and what's being lost to to wildlife. But um, it, it's a service we don't have money to fund. Um, and it's also, if you look at the invoices from U S D A on it, their administrative costs are are. Double what the labor costs are. They're they're killing us with the, with the administrative costs. Uh, we could, we could probably find a way to get around the labor cost. But then you, you know, I think labor's around sixty thousand and then another sixty thousand for administrative costs, so the total all in is a hundred and twenty. Um, and part of that is funded through the state. And I think our part of it this year was ninety five thousand dollars, I think this year was our part of it. So, um. But yeah, the administrative costs on that, on that program is what kills us.
Well, maybe because we've started reconvening the afternoon so we can make time for work sessions. Maybe if I could, I could reach out to Lee Foster because months ago, he had already started putting information together about. What the pros and cons were. If we try to get away from the state and the feds and all their administrative costs. But we need their partnership in order to have access.
Basically, the only thing that we really can't do. Um, well, and and it might get a little sticky when you're, when you're talking about wolves and other protected species. But um, beyond that, it's the poison that they administer for the, for the ravens and the power lines. And what, everything else, we could, we could contract out to a private individual or employ a private individual.
And the power lines is where, where you do get into that area people don't think about because that has really direct implications on utility costs.
So, so potentially. Um, a partnership between the county and the power, uh, O T E C and Harney Electric. Um, maybe, you know, maybe some state fund, I don't know, I don't know how to put it together because it just, it's it's pulling money out of thin air.
Well, if we think we're gonna have time in the next one or two meetings, if we have some openings in our work session time. Maybe I can see if Mr. Foster can make one of those times work and see what, what his ideas are because he had done some work on that and then. I'm sure we won't have enough information for a decision, but it was food thought.
It's, yeah, it's time to start thinking about it. I mean, we've got nine months until the next, till the next budget is finalized. But uh, now's the time on some of this stuff, so definitely have a.
Okay, I'll email, we see what works for him. Done. Alright. Uh, in the comprehensive plan in several of the sections, particularly the ones dealing with land use and natural resources. It explicitly says that every five years we'll reevaluate the comprehensive plan. And because I feel like there are gonna be more opportunities for us to use that comprehensive plan and dealing with state and federal agencies in the future. I think it would be important that we make sure we, e- even if we just have a committee look over it and say, yep, that's still good. And we can check it off to say, this has been updated within the last five years because most of those portions haven't been updated in a decade. Maybe little portions of them have, but.
Things, yeah, stuff changes over a long period of time and I would think that some of the newer. Things were not envisioned or addressed for that.
And maybe, maybe it could be as simple as if if we can identify. Like for example, with the land plan, we, if we can ask our, our planning director, take a look at this and see if it needs updated or can we make it work? Because to me, best case scenario would be if we can make what we have and there's still work. Then we can formally reapprove it so that it has a timestamp of right now. And if there are areas that. Yeah, they work, but they can be fleshed out a little bit, we can work on that in the next three years. But in the meantime, we have a plan because when I was using that as a bargaining chip with O W R D, I was just waiting for them to say. Oh, wait a minute, this hasn't been updated, so it's void. But they never read it.
Yeah, let's figure out. So I would, I would propose or recommend or suggest that um, our planning director be given that task. And uh, convene a committee to look at it and take one chapter or one section at a time. And and flesh it out for for applicability for today versus ten years ago. Um, and you know, one of us can either be on that or when they're done with it, they can present it to us for.
I think that's a really good place to start. It's alright, I will email Brandon and ask him and the planning commission to take a look at that. And kind of explain what we're going for because especially in the natural resources, with the interact committee that we have now and the expertise present. We could really flesh that out and make it a really good plan. But I see no reason to do that while we have an outdated plan. First thing, we need to get our plan up to date.
Would your recommendation be both the planning committee and the N RAC be involved in that?
No, I.
Just members of each or?
I think what you suggested, have the planning department take a look at it first and see if there are any real red flags or things that. Are not within the bounds of the law.
Yeah, I, that's not quite what I, what I had proposed, though. I would like to have it all put before a committee. You know, one person may not be, more minds are better than one.
The planning commission is what I thought, I mean, that's kind of.
Well, are you talking just the planner or the planning commission? Put it before them first.
I would email the planner and ask him to please take it to the commission and have them look it over.
Could be the initial, the initial review on it.
Yeah, initial review, that's.
Yeah, uh, it's, the only thing is, 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 and I don't know what the compliment of our planning commission is right now. But if they don't have anybody on their commission that has uh, subject matter knowledge on natural resources and whatnot, then. Then that would be an element that we wanna add to it.
Maybe we could ask him to present it to his commission for initial review and identify if there are any. Any expertise gaps that we need to look to some of our other advisory committees or put together a committee of people. Cause I agree, I'd prefer to have a group of people look at it and sign off on it rather than one person.
Yeah, um. Either way, it's either side of the coin, maybe, whatever. I'm just looking at it for efficiency purposes. If you have people on that group all at once that are doing it versus. One review and then another review and it just takes time.
And it's, it's possible, Brandon might come back and say, we actually did reapprove that. Four years ago, and if that's the case, then if the N RAC feels strongly about certain portions, they can start working on that. And when they get finished, they can bring it to us for approval. But if Brandon looks at it and says, yeah, it was twenty. Twenty ten when we last looked at it.
Just, just my input, but if you wanna run with it, I'd be more than happy, happy run with it.
Well, yeah, I'll fire off.
So I'm just saying, I'm just saying my, my concerns on, you know, getting people to look at it at the right times and whatnot. So if, if. You know, however you wanna do it, I'm fine with.
Okay, we'll start with that. That's all I had. You guys covered everything else and you're on my list.
Um, so then in that case. Um, so on our, on our agenda for a work session, I'd like to adjourn the regular session. Um, if there's no other business for regular session, I'd like to adjourn a regular session at. One forty six P M. And then um, let's take a five minute break and come back in at. Five till, or that's a little over five minutes, but let's come back in at five till.